Oh, I thought I was naturally.
Uh, we will call the December twelfth meeting in Caroline County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, I've asked Reverend Marvin Fields if he would deliver the invocation for us. Reverend Fields, if you'll please stand.
Oh, wise eternal Father, is it in the precious name of Jesus now that we come asking a blessing upon this entire county? We thank you for this meeting that we're about to go through. Be with each supervisor, be with each and every one that's watching and listening. And when it's all said and done, we want to thank you for allowing us to give his sake. We ask him a blessing upon this meeting, in Jesus' name we pray, as we all say, amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. If you'll join with me for the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members at this time, have any amendments to our agenda? Hearing none, a motion to accept the agenda as, uh, presented would be in order, so move this chairman.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously, the agenda as it stands. Uh, first order of business is presentations and reports. And understand that Reverend Fields and Bishop Fields have an appointment, so we're gonna do them first. If, uh, Reverend Marvin Fields could come first, we might as well bring the bishop up too. For those of you who don't know, that's a father and son ministry. And we have a resolution recognizing Reverend Marvin Fields for his twenty-six years of service as pastor of Second Mount Zion Baptist Church. Whereas Reverend Marvin Fields was born in New York, the son of deacon and deaconess, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Fields, and whereas he furthered his education at Queensborough Community College and studied theology at the Baptist Bible College in Pennsylvania. And whereas Reverend Fields began his spiritual leadership as a deacon in nineteen seventy-three and accepted his calling as a licensed minister in nineteen seventy-nine. While ministering in New York, he served in a leadership role as a state representative youth pastor and interim pastor. Whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, he relocated his family from New York to Caroline. After retiring from the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice where he mentored hundreds of youth, he had the opportunity to spend more time with his family and serving his community. And whereas his spiritual path led Reverend Fields to accept the calling to pastor Second Mount Zion Baptist Church in Caroline County in the Greater Dawn area, where his guidance and leadership have helped the church to grow and prosper through many years. And whereas the county of Caroline wishes to honor Reverend Fields' faithful service to Second Mount Zion, celebrate his accomplishments and thank him for his many contributions to the county and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its enthusiastic congratulations to Reverend Marvin Fields on the occasion of his twenty-sixth anniversary as pastor of Second Mount Zion and wish and much continued success in the future. It's adopted this twelfth day of December. Reverend Fields, thank you very much for all you've done.
I think it's. Yeah, it's, it's not normal that I have a.
Well, do you have something you'd like to say Reverend?
You said I was born in New York or no, I was born here. That's a mistake. I was born here in Caroline County.
We will correct that because you moved to New York and then came back home. We will make sure we correct that for you, okay? Bishop, you were born in New York. We're not gonna make that mistake again. All right. I have one and, and I wanna make sure we give you both your due, so I wanted to make sure if you had anything to say. But I have another one, and, and this really speaks highly to the Fields family and, and Mrs. Fields and, and what she's done with her son, grandson, that, that you both are raised up in the ministry. It, it says a lot. It's, it's really a great thing. And Dwayne, I know it's hard being a preacher kid. You did a great job. So the, the second res- uh, resolution we have is congratulating Bishop Dwayne Field Senior for his twenty-three years of service to Oxford Mount Zion Baptist Church and his appointment to the office of bishop. Whereas Bishop Dwayne Field Senior was born in Queens, New York to Pastor Marvin Fields and the late First Lady, Mrs. Marvin Fields, and whereas Bishop Fields was licensed as a minister on May eleventh, nineteen ninety-eight at the Second Mount Zion Baptist Church in Caroline County under the tutelage of his father Reverend Marvin Fields. And whereas he accepted a calling to pastor Oxford Mount Zion Baptist Church in Ruta Glen and was installed October twenty-second, two thousand. And whereas, under his leadership and guidance, the church and the ministry have seen significant growth. Recently celebrated a hundred consecutive months of souls being saved and expansion to add three hundred additional sanctuary seats. Whereas in twenty seventeen, Bishop Fields was appointed to the office of District Leader of Virginia for the Global United Fellowship and International Body of Spiritual Leaders, Fellowships and Congregations. On October eighth, twenty twenty-two, Pastor Fields was elevated to the office of bishop by founding bishop Neil C. Ellis. On July twenty-twenty-three, he was appointed to the office of Metropolitan Bishop for the Northern Deanery of the Global United Fellowship. And whereas the Caroline County wishes to honor Bishop Fields' faithful service to Oxford Mount Zion Baptist Church, celebrate his recent accomplishments and thank him for his many contributions to the county. Now therefore be it resolved that Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby extends an enthusiastic congratulations to Bishop Dwayne Field Senior on the occasion of his twenty-third anniversary as pastor of Oxford Mount Zion Baptist Church and his appointment to the office of Metropolitan Bishop. Adopted this twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-three. Bishop Fields, do you have something you would like to say? Thank you. Now that was a nice gesture there. Again, dad giving the son the hand to say thank you, congratulations. Are there any Second Mount Zion folks in the audience? You can raise your hand. Are there any Oxford Mount Zion folks in, on the audience? You can raise your hand. All right, you, you both have done a wonderful job and, and personally I know you both and you've been role models for me. Dwayne, I remember when you played basketball for the high school, so. I'm not that old though. Gentlemen, if you will come forward, we'd like to take a picture of, of you two, uh, for the county record. I don't know where, uh, Casey's gonna go. Again, I wanna thank, uh, Reverend Fields and Bishop Fields for their service to the county and their spiritual uplift for all of us. So, one more time. Alrighty, and they had a meeting at six-thirty, so we tried not to make them late, but thank, thanks again gentlemen. Our next order of business is a recognition of, uh, three people who have recently retired from the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. We have three re- resolutions for them. One for Tina Gibbs. Tina? Come on down. Yes. And Linda Sharp is here too. Come on down Linda. And the other one, um. Paula, I'm sorry. I can read, I just can't see. Uh, Paula, I understand has already started her, uh, retirement, is out of the state. So we have three resolutions. Mr. Underwood is gonna read Tina's. Mrs. Long is gonna read Linda's and Mr. Bassoon is gonna read Paula's. Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. A resolution commending Tina Gibbs on the occasion of her retirement from Caroline County. Whereas Ms. Tina Gibbs began her employment with Caroline County Commissioner of Revenue's Office on September twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven. And whereas she was appointed as a business administrative assistant and worked as a business personal property tax examiner at the time of her retirement. And whereas Ms. Gibbs spent the majority of her time working with Caroline County businesses, helping them to remain in compliance with the tax-related ordinances and tax laws. Her duties required her to remain knowledgeable in many aspects of the job, including keeping up with the training and several different state-controlled databases. And whereas she was respected and is respected for her work ethic and dedication to the job and made significant contributions to the success of the Commissioner Revenue's Office. And whereas Ms. Gibbs retired from employment with Caroline County on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and thanks Ms. Tina Gibbs for her accomplishments, her commitment to Caroline County and her years of service. Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Supervisor conveys its very best wishes to Ms. Gibbs and her family for a very enjoyable retirement. Adopted the twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-three, signed by Charles M. Cully, who was the clerk of the board and Mr. Floyd Thomas, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Congratulations, Ms. Gibbs.
It's my pleasure to read a resolution commending Linda Sharp on the occasion of her retirement from Caroline County. Whereas Ms. Linda Sharp began full-time employment with the Caroline County Commissioner of Revenue's Office on October first, two thousand and eight. And whereas she primarily worked as a personal property tax examiner slash supervisor until the end of tw- twenty sixteen. At that time, the Commissioner's Office had an immediate need in the DMV section and Ms. Sharp agreed to take on a brand-new job without hesitation. And whereas she was respected, wait a minute, I missed the spot. Function of the Commissioner's many years to come, whereas she was respected for her work ethic, dedication and joyous and fun attitude and made significant contributions to the success of the Commissioner's Office. And whereas Ms. Sharp retired from employment with Caroline County on October the sixth, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and thanks Linda Sharp for her accomplishments, her commitment to Caroline County and her years of public service. Be it further resolved that the board conveys its very best wishes to Mrs. Miss Sharp on her and her family for a very enjoyable retirement. Adopted this twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-three, signed by Mr. Charles M. Cully and Chairman Floyd Thomas.
And Miss, Mr. Bassoon has, has one for, uh, Ms. Marquis.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. This is a resolution commending Paula Marquis on the occasion of her retirement from Caroline County. Whereas Ms. Paula Marquis began employment with the Caroline County Commissioner of the Revenue's Office in November, two thousand and thirteen. And whereas after previously working in various jobs, including serving as a magistrate for the Commonwealth of Virginia, she was appointed as a part-time DMV specialist with the Commissioner's Office. And whereas throughout her career, Ms. Marquis was always ready to serve the needs of the office and single-handedly covered the DMV select, select section for a few weeks when one employee left and another, another was out on leave. And whereas she was respected for dedication to work and professionalism and made significant contributions to the success of the Commissioner Revenue's Office. And whereas Ms. Marquis retired from employment with Caroline County on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And now for, now therefore be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and thanks Paula Marquis for her accomplishments, her commitment to Caroline County and her years of public service. Be it further resolved that the board conveys its very best wishes to Ms. Marquis and her family for a very enjoyable requirement. Adopted this twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-three. Signed Charles M. Cully, clerk of the board and Chairman Floyd Thomas. Thank you all. She's looking at, uh, through YouTube Live, so thank you Paula.
Uh, if you can repeat that, Mr. Bassoon.
Paula is in South Carolina, moving into her new, uh, condo down there, and she's watching this on YouTube, so.
Alrighty, board members, thank you for your indulgence in doing the presentations first. I'm gonna go back to our opening board comments. Mr. Forehand, opening board comments?
Oh, pass for now, thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, I just have a few. Uh, first of all, um, we had an opportunity today to, uh, excuse me, attend the, uh, groundbreaking for, uh, the Ladysmith Road project that is now pretty much complete. Uh, one of the things that we found out today, and that is going to be a huge economic engine for the county moving forward, uh, going from two lanes to four lanes. Uh, we found out today that that, um, just that corridor between, uh, ninety-five and Route One, uh, has eleven thousand trips per day on it. So it is the biggest secondary road, most busy secondary road, um, in the county, so. Um, that says a lot and that is a, that was a solid investment by the county, uh, back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, I also do wanna thank, um, bo- excuse me, uh, Bowling Green, the town of Bowling Green, uh, had an opportunity, uh, with the Ladysmith Road Church Club to, uh, participate uh, in their, uh, Christmas parade and, uh, it's always a fun time to see so many people from the county that you know that are out there. So it's kind of a county tradition every year, so thank you to the town of Bowling Green and everyone that was involved with, uh, putting that on. Um, we had a, uh, last week, I guess it was, we had the county, uh, employee, uh, picnic or luncheon, a Christmas, uh, Christmas luncheon. And it was also nice to see so many county employees, uh, that were there and uh, we really appreciate as a Board of Supervisors, I know it's really kinda hard to, uh, put into perspective uh, what the county employees do, but, uh, there's so many of them that do so much for this county, so uh, we do wanna thank all of them for that. I do wanna congratulate, uh, Mr. Thomas, um, for a year as chairman. Uh, Mr. Thomas has done an excellent job, always does when he is chair, so. Uh, Mr. Thomas has done an excellent job, always does when he is chair, so thank you for that. And last but not least, I would like to miss, uh, wish Miss Long a very happy birthday, so thank you. So, happy birthday, Miss Long.
Ms. Sue? Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I'd like to talk about the Bowling Green Parade a little bit. We went back to a daytime parade, which I think all in all turned out much nicer than the nighttime parade. You got to see all the participants in the parade on the floats and actively recognize folks. So it was a change that I think went extremely well this year. Um, we just finished the light contest in Bowling Green between residents and and with businesses. Those winners were all out. Um, every year we get more and more participation in the light contest. And with the map that goes out, we noticed people driving around to look at the lights. We have some pretty spectacular light, uh, light shows in Bowling Green. There are some people that really do go all out. If you take a look at the map and look online at the winners, you'll know where to go look. But everybody's house that's done is really, really nice. And finally, I'd like to just say thank you to the board, the the Beasley family celebration for our major league, World Series champions. I always, I'm not a sports person. Um, had an excellent showing. He had some great folks come to speak for him. I'll, I will never forget the gentleman from the Richmond Flying Squirrels. He did a a beautiful rendition of Mr. Beasley's career and very thankful for all the other folks that participated and everybody that came. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Uh, Mrs. Long, on your birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and and thank everyone for their well wishes this year. Um, I wanted to say that I also attended the ribbon cutting, we'll call it, on the road over Lady Smith, uh, this morning. Uh, and I want to thank VDOT. They got that project done ahead of schedule and under budget. So hats off to them for doing that. I want to thank the, uh, Smart Scale Program for the grant to help us pay for that bridge. Uh, I think, uh, we're gonna see a lot of improvements over there. And VDOT did want to express their thanks to, uh, citizens of Caroline for putting up with the construction. They realized that there were a lot of lane changes and and signs that changed every couple of weeks as they got this project done. Uh, but they really appreciated the consideration of the citizens of Caroline. So thank all of you for for realizing this was a project that needed everyone's cooperation to get it done, uh, as it was. Um, I attended, uh, yesterday the candlelight service at AP Hill at his, uh, Historic Liberty Church. It was a lovely service. Uh, and enjoyed seeing a a lot of area residents, uh, attend also. And other than that, I want to thank everyone for all they've done to support the board this year. Want to thank Mr. Thomas for his his work, uh, and our staff. I had a meeting on the staff luncheon day. I was there early for about half an hour, but then I had to to go and attend to to my job, uh, and attend a meeting. So I'm sorry I couldn't stay for the whole thing and wish all of you, uh, who work for the county and all the citizens there, uh, Merry Christmas, but I do wish you blessings for the holiday season and, uh, blessings for the year to come. Together we can do great things in Caroline. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, first, I'd like to extend my birthday wishes to Mrs. Long. Happy birthday. I'd like to also extend my condolences to Richard Griffin family in Fredericksburg. He's a good friend of mine, uh, lifelong educator who passed on last Monday, certainly, um, this past Monday. Wanted to give my condolences to his family. I'd like to also congratulate the Beasley family. I went to the celebration. It was really awesome. Um, Tony was a, is a remarkable speaker. And if you ever wanted to hear a a story that's inspiring, he has an inspiring story to tell about just never giving up your your wish, your dreams. Uh, she, no, Tony, he's not a, he's not a big guy at all. He's very small, compact. But just the wherewithal to stick to your dreams is the message that every young person from Caroline County and across the country needs to hear. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. I'm I'm gonna add a couple of quick ones. Uh, first of all, congratulations to, uh, Dr. Rollins Phelps, who was elected as the President of the School Board Association. It's the first time we've ever had somebody from Caroline to serve in that position, so, uh, congratulations to her. Oh, I see her now, and I know you'll do well for the county as far as representing us, so thank you very much. Uh, yesterday I attended the school board reception for outgoing members, uh, Mr. John Copeland and Miss Nancy Carson. And they also paid tribute to the late, uh, George George Spalding. And, uh, again, to add the Beasley celebration, it was a great event. Uh, I thought it was great that the county had a chance to show something. We have a resolution for Mr. Beasley. If he makes it here, if not, we'll, uh, try to do something else to make sure we get him here. And and last but not least, we talked about the employee party and and all of our employees do a great job. I want to personally say thank you to to all of them because the employees make the board look good and hopefully vice versa. But without your service to the county, uh, we we couldn't do what we do. And personally for me, I need to thank, uh, Pam Hall because if there's anything we need done and I ask Pam about it, she makes it happen. I want to thank, uh, Tamika Morgan, because if I ever need to know a number or anything about finance, she makes it happen. And, uh, Mr. Parton, who who cracks the whip when need be, uh, to make things happen. But he does a great job when he's the head of the county, uh, when those times call for it. So for all of you folks, we thank you. Uh, Mr. Hughes, we thank you too. And we're gonna keep on going. We had a great year so far, so, uh, we're gonna keep up the progress. That's it, and we will get back to our presentations. Uh, Mr. Thorpe from VDOT? Is he here? Mr. Thorpe from VDOT? Well, we're supposed to get a winter storm, uh, warning or briefing from him, and I guess we got the snow, so that was enough. Uh, we're gonna talk about employee health and dental. Ms. Grasso, as always, good to see you. Mr. Parton is gonna lead us off. This is the en- annual renewal of our health and dental insurance program.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a brief introduction. As you said, uh, we have with us tonight Nancy Grasso of One Digital, uh, who will make a presentation regarding the renewal, uh, which is for the time period of March first, uh, two thousand twenty-four through, I don't think it's a a leap year next year, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, One Digital is the county's, uh, benefits, uh, consultant. It helps us, uh, walk, walk through the al- often complicated maze of of health insurance renewal. Uh, this year, uh, I want to commend them in particular, um, because as you will hear, our our increase, uh, ended up being a, uh, a very modest two percent, uh, over the current year. But the initial review of all our data and and pertinent, uh, factors, uh, was projecting an eight percent increase. And, uh, by recommending that we rebid our stop-loss or reinsurance coverage, uh, One Digital was able to bring it down to a much more, uh, reasonable and manageable level of an increase. Uh, with that, I will, I will turn it over to Nancy Grasso for a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Board of Supervisors. It's great to be back here. I've been here a little while. Ms. Jones has kind of been making these presentations over the past couple of years, so it's good to see you all again. Um, yeah, I wanted to just briefly kind of go over, you guys can see the screen?
Yes, we've got screens here.
Okay, good, okay. Um, so just wanted to talk really briefly, just have a couple of slides. It won't take too long. Um, our final impact of the renewal increase was two percent. Um, and because the, um, the county and the affiliated groups, uh, participate in the payment of that premium, uh, the impact to the employees as a total is fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that's in its entirety and its aggregate. And we'll show you in a little bit how it'll impact each of their kind of payroll cycles. Um, the impact to the county of that increase is seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. And again, that's also separated between the the separate entities being, you know, the jail, the town of Bowling Green and the county. Um, based on the renewal of Anthem, uh, the overall renewal was about eight percent with six point one percent of that, um, coming from, um, the the majority of that was coming from the stop-loss, which is kind of the the reinsurance that we buy in our self-funded plan. Uh, and we were, like, um, Mr. Parton said, we were able to go out to the marketplace, do some negotiations, give them some additional data and bring that way down. And so when we brought that down, it brought the overall renewal down to two percent. Um, so all the plan options say the same. We weren't in a situation where we need to change anything, um, any benefits at all. So the employees are seeing the same benefits, uh, with a slight increase. Um, and just for point of reference, you know, the average increase that's coming around to the majority of our clients this year is about seven to eight percent is where we're landing in most of our clients. Um, obviously, some of them are getting higher if their illnesses and whatnot and their claims are are way up there. They're seeing a little bit more than that, but you know, the average group, if we had an average at all, it's probably about eight or nine percent. So, um, a two percent is very indicative of a plan that's running really well. Um, so this is a, uh, an ugly eye chart. I'm sorry about that. But, uh, wanted to give you the numbers in front of you, the, um, so that you can see the totals in that very first column, the grand total of your premium, how it's divided between the county, the town of Bowling Green and the detention center. Um, you can see how much of that the employees are paying, um, and how much the employer is paying. So, um, I don't know that we need to read through it, but if you have any questions there, I'm happy to to answer anything there. Okay, um, and so, uh, this is how, we have two plans, um, and in the board packet, there's some information about that. The majority of our people, we offer two plans. One is the Key Care Plan, which is represented on the bottom here, and the Health Keepers Plan, which is represented on the top. The Health Keepers Plan is a less expensive plan, not quite as rich as the Key Care Plan. Uh, and probably, I would say, because of the economics of it, most of the population is being driven into that plan. Um, so we're seeing, even though there is an option to upgrade plans, uh, people don't want to spend more money to do it. Um, so most of the people you'll see are on the Health Keepers Plan, which is a very, when we benchmark it against other county government, school systems, municipalities in, both in your region and across the state, the state, it's a very competitive plan design. Um, so we feel like you're in a relatively good place there. And of course, you're able to keep it, you know, affordable, uh, for the employees. So you can see on the far right of this, another eye chart, on the far right, this tells you how the increase is impacting payroll. So you can see how the employees, what they'll pay each month in addition to what they're paying today. So it's it's it's, you know, pretty immaterial, honestly. Any questions here? Um, dental plan stayed the same. We had no increase to rate, no changes in the benefits. Uh, so there's not really a lot to report there. That's running really well. Um, we were able to negotiate back a zero, uh, you know, flat renewal there. So there'll be no changes, no economic changes to either the the county or any of the affiliated, uh, groups as well as to the employees. Any questions there? That's kind of all I have, so, um, if there's any questions overall.
Can you briefly explain the difference in the high and low plan here?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'll go back to that.
Well, that was the dental high and low plan.
Yeah, so this doesn't actually go through all of the benefits. Um, the the Health Keepers and the Key Care Plan relatively have the same network. There was a time when the Health Keepers Plan had a, uh, had a smaller network than the Key Care Plan, but now they're both the same. Um, the primary difference between the two plans, there's gonna be a little bit of variety in in the benefit. You know, how they, uh, what what the out-of-pocket is. In some instances, Key Care is less, and in some instances, it's more. So for example, if you go to the Key Care Plan, your maximum out-of-pocket is greater than it would be on the Health Keepers Plan, so it would show up not as rich. The reason for the for the, um, the decrease in the premium is because your Key Care Plan is a true PPO plan. So it'll allow people who have, you know, out-of-state doctors, or if they want to go to MD Anderson or, you know, Mayo Clinic, they have the ability to go wherever they want. In the Health Keepers Plan, they need, they need to stay in the Virginia, um, market unless they have an emergency and they're outside of the service area. That's really the primary difference between the two.
Alright, any other questions? And we have to do this next month or right now?
Uh, now would be great. We want to get your renewal and the open enrollment started. So until you give out blessing, we can't really prepare all the documents for open enrollment. And we do want to give everybody a, an ample amount of time to take this home, speak with their families, make their decision and enroll. So, um, sooner would be better.
Alrighty, Mr. Parton? You had a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
And your recommendation is?
It is to do two things. Uh, one is to approve the renewal of, uh, of medical and dental insurance plans, uh, for the new plan year as recommended by by One Digital and and county staff, as you just heard. And the second is to approve, uh, the county employee contribution rate, uh, percentages, uh, matching the current plan year, which will result in an estimated, and it is an estimate, uh, additional cost of just under, uh, seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four to the county or or any other alternative the board sees fit. But those are the two actions that we were requesting.
Submit.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mrs. Long and seconded by Mr. Black. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Parton, and thank you, Ms. Grasso. Our next presentation is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three audit presentation. Um, Ms. Morgan, do you want to set the table or are we just gonna have, uh, Mr. Gilmer come up? You can come on up, Mr. Gilmer.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Tonight we will have our fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three audit presentation from Travis Gilmer, our, uh, Director from Brown Edwards and Associates.
Well, good evening. As, uh, Tamika said, my name is Travis Gilmer. I'm a director with, uh, Brown Edwards. I'm here to do the required public presentation of our audit of the county and school board for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, before I go over some key highlights of the audit, you know, I really just want to thank the board for the opportunity to serve you. Uh, this has been our second year, uh, doing the audit. And you know, the staff, as we've gotten to know them, really great to work with. Um, and I just really appreciate all their time and effort, uh, during the audit. You know, especially like to thank, uh, Tamika at the county and Marcia at the, uh, school board, uh, just for all that they do to make sure this process goes, uh, smooth as possible. And really just kind of wanted to remind you about this process. You know, it is a very long process. It starts in April, uh, so right after the end of tax season for us and obviously ends now in December. Uh, we spent over nine hundred hours on the audit, um, this past year. Uh, so you know, this much time together really requires a good, uh, working relationship. And so I just really appreciate, uh, the relationship that we've developed, uh, with the county and the school board. Um, really just want to kind of touch on just a couple of, uh, key highlights that I think are important. Uh, in terms of the financial report, um, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion for the two thousand twenty-three audit. So that's always great to hear. Um, there is one, uh, piece of the document. Now, the financial report's, you know, two hundred plus pages long, so it's, uh, it's a big document. But within there is the, uh, management's discussion and analysis. So if you really wanted to sort of point a reader, uh, to the financial statements to, you know, something sort of sh- uh, short and sweet and concise uh, versus, you know, read two hundred and plus pages, uh, you really would want them to read the M D N A as it's really just a nice sort of high-level overview of the year. And it's only about eight pages long, so that's a lot better than two hundred and thirty or so. Uh, in terms of ARPA money, uh, the county as of six thirty had approximately four point three left of unspent ARPA money. So a decent chunk of that is still available, uh, to use. Um, in terms of, now, obviously, the most key, important statistic is the, uh, unassigned fund balance. And so at the end of the year, unassigned fund balance in the And so at the end of the year, unassigned fund balance in the general fund was twenty-seven point six million dollars. This is a, a slight decrease from the prior year of, uh, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars or, um, close to to two percent. So to kind of put this somewhat in perspective, you know, if general fund expenditures were forty-nine point three million dollars and you broke that down, uh, by month, um, your ratio would cover, uh, your, in terms of your unassigned fund balance, would cover six point seven months of expenditure. So if no money came in the door, you'd be able to cover about six point seven months worth of operations, uh, using your unassigned fund balance. And so just to kind of give you a comparison, the national average is two months. So the county's at six point seven, the national average is two months, so it is indicative of a very healthy, uh, fund balance. Now, the point that I wanted to make is that fund balance is composed of a couple of different pools, right? Uh, unassigned kind of being the most notable one, but there's also committed fund balance. And you utilize this to set aside money for maybe you've, uh, identified specific projects that you know are upcoming, you're setting this money aside, um, for these specific items. Committed fund balance was seven point eight million dollars, uh, this year. And so that's a, a huge increase from the prior year of, uh, it's a six point eight million dollars increase of the prior year. So the reason that the unassigned fund balance didn't go up is because you're setting more money aside for specific projects. So I just want to point that out. Had you not done that, then certainly unassigned fund balance would have shot up. But I think it's smart to plan ahead and set aside money for projects that you have coming up. In terms of the, uh, utility fund, it had, uh, operating income of, uh, two point two million dollars, uh, before transfers. Uh, this was compared to six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in the prior year. This is really just kind of predominantly due to, uh, increases in connection fees as well as interest income due to higher interest rates. In terms of, you know, any type of, uh, findings that we have, you know, kind of similar to last year, uh, we did have, um, a couple, uh, of, uh, budget findings. So actual expenditures exceeded the final budget numbers for, uh, just several of the departments and several of the funds. And in terms of, uh, single audit, uh, we did have a, a procurement finding, um, really just the, the county that needs to updates written procurement policies in relation to uniform guidance, which handles federal, uh, money. Um, in addition to the report, um, there are two other letters that we'll issue. Uh, the first one is the required communication with those charged with governance. Uh, it's a pretty standard letter, and it just communicates information to the board such as the most sensitive estimates, uh, posted, unposted adjustments, any difficulty during the audit, any differences of opinion and so on. And then lastly is the, the management letter. So I'm happy to report, we just had one new management letter comment, and it's really just the statements of economic interest. A lot of different boards have to turn them in, and so it is, uh, difficult at times to get everybody to get them in on time. Uh, there are a few that were not filed by the deadline, and I'm happy to report that in terms of the prior year comments that we had, uh, the, both the county and schools have really done a great job of taking our comments seriously and implementing them and clearing, uh, them and addressing them as best as they can, so. That's all I really have. Really just want to kind of keep it short and sweet, but at a very high level. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any questions at this time? All right, I guess there's none for you. There's probably a couple for Mrs. Morgan. Did you have a question, Mr. Black?
I wonder when we'll get the written report?
That'll be at the end, end of this week.
And, and we'll get the electronic version at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Mrs. Morgan, I just had a question for you because there were a couple of items that, that the county paid for out of the unencumbered balance during the year. Could you, could you mention those two?
Yes, sir. So one of the things that, I have two items that Mr. Gilmer, uh, referenced that I wanted to, um, provide some, some background.
Sure.
One was the six point eight million dollars that he stated that we had committed. So that was for the items we committed, uh, three items this year, um, this fiscal year. There was three million dollars committed to well development, one million dollars committed to the Rappahannan Water Intake Project. Um, so for a total of four million dollars for utility projects were reserved, restricted and committed for those items alone. And then there was a two point six million dollar commitment to public safety projects. So that totals the six point six million, and of course, there were some other smaller items for commitment. So that's what made up his committed number. Um, and just the other thing that I wanted to make note of, Mr. Gilmer also notated that we had four point three million dollars in the ARPA funds, but I just want to remind you guys that that has, um, mostly been reserved for the broadband project.
Yes. Do you recall what that number was?
Um, it was three point nine million. Three point nine million, three million nine hundred fifty-five thousand.
So basically, the ARPA funds that we have have to be used by September next year?
What you have done since, um, the end of last fiscal year is gone ahead and reserved that, so I have removed that from ARPA funds, and it's already reserved and committed in that same bucket now for fiscal year twenty-four. So we don't, we don't have any worries on how we, how or when we'll spend that.
Okay, and, and I'm sure they'll be spending it, right, Mr. Sadler, all of, uh, next year? So that's, that's part of the broadband committee, so that's a great thing to know. All right, and, and the net to the fund balance was down five hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
The original recommendation was to pull two point something million?
One point two million.
One point two million.
Fund balance, yes, sir.
Okay. All righty, any other questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Forehand?
We, we spoke about it, but I want to do it in a public manner. When we implemented the cigarette tax.
Yes, sir.
We will see results this coming fiscal year, this current fiscal year.
Yes, sir. You actually saw some results within the fiscal year twenty-three as well.
But we did not designate them or, or
That is correct.
Define where they go specifically. Okay. So that's something we can, at any point, if we have a majority, we can vote to designate those funds to where I promised that I would try to route them, um, for public health and recreation, so, okay, thank you very much.
The only thing that we designated that would come out of the, the revenue was the actual cost of the stamps, which is very minimal.
Agreed, that's, that's perfect. Uh, we don't, I won't look in for net.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That was it? All right.
And just as a closing statement, as Mr. Gilmer stated, we will have the, um, the written copy as well as the electronic copy submitted to the state on the required deadline by Friday.
Okay, one last thing, Mr. Gilmer. Is, is there any possible way we can get the audit done before we're six months into the next year?
Oh, you mean in terms of like the timing?
Yeah.
I mean, this is really a normal timing for a state government. So, you know, it's, so it's, it's usually the normal timeline. Um, the state deadline, as Tamika said, is, uh, twelve fifteen, so there's a, a lot, as we mentioned, there's nine hundred hours on our part that go into the audit. Um, so there's only so much you can do before you're in. You have, you know, all your closing entries and, um, getting support for the audit. So, um, I think that we have a pretty good timeline, uh, established in terms of getting it done. I will say, I mean, right now, just with all the difficulties, the turnover and, you know, we have a lot of clients that aren't filing by the deadline. And so just some kind of context of, you know, I think we're very fortunate to be here and be able to present and have it wrapped up, whereas certainly have a handful of clients that are in good of a shape.
Yeah, it's, it's just, I mean, from my perspective, we're six months into the twenty-four year, and we're just now getting the actual numbers for twenty-three. So we're, we're eighteen months behind in trying to plan the budget for next year. So I, I was just hoping with all things being electronic and all the various systems there, you could give us a preliminary report.
Yeah.
Sooner.
I wish, I know, I wish it was quicker. One thing that I thought about, because I know this question kind of came up last year, and I haven't really talked to Tamika about it, but, you know, county does do a really good job of, with their trial balances, actually setting aside funds. And so you could, in theory, look at the general fund if you just want a sort of an unaudited, rough estimation of what unassigned fund balance was. Since you do actually set aside the money for the different, um, sort of pots related to, uh, fund balance, you could potentially, um, be able to give like a rough estimate of what unassigned fund balance is. That wouldn't be a final number, but it would at least be kind of at least where it's trending is at that point. But, you know, with the audit, you do have a lot of year-end adjustments and accruals, so that could potentially change. That, that's the tricky part.
All right, but, but, but you would be okay with doing a unaudited preliminary possible, this is what the figures are close to?
Yeah, we could, we could look at the numbers that the county has and say, this is what it is right now, sort of unaudited. At least had an idea, yeah.
Okay, because that, I mean, that's important. We're going to start the budget cycle next month, which is really three weeks, so. I mean, you can understand the perspective, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Been able to know it, uh, throughout the years. And I think that's something that we can work together with, try to figure out something, um, a metric that we could give or some type of, at least unaudited board.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we're not going to hold you to it, to the penny. Well, to the quarter, we might hold, you know, give you a little bit of leeway. But I think it's something that's really valuable for the rest of the board, so. All right, we appreciate your hard work and thank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, that was our last presentation. Uh, we have appointments. Social Services Advisory Board, Western Carolina?
Yeah, I'm just going to reappoint Mr. Andy Hoyt.
Second.
Andy Hoyt?
Yep.
Mrs. Long makes the second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forehand?
Do not have a candidate yet.
Okay. I think, Mr. Hughes, do we have all the transportation committee members we need, or do you want to make another one?
I have, uh, I talked to, to, uh, Leon today, and I'd like to nominate, uh, Jimmy Street to join the transportation committee.
Okay, is there a second to, uh, well, what is yours, Mr. Underwood? Miss Benita Fox?
Benita Fox.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint, uh, Jimmy Street and Benita Fox to the transportation committee?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Black. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hughes, does that fill your plate now?
Well, the, the committee at the first meeting decided that they would recommend that the committee be capped at seventeen. There was a draft, uh, bylaws presented, and in that draft, it did not have a cap of members. And so the committee decided that to allow for a broad representation, uh, across the county, that they would cap that number at seventeen voting members. Those voting members would be members that are appointed by the board.
Okay.
And so, um.
How many do we have so far?
I think right now we are at four.
At twenty?
Miss, no. I just have a question, whatever, Mr.
Okay. So we're not close to seventeen yet?
No. No.
Okay. All right, we're good, and, and you've started meeting schedule already, so the court can get started.
So do we need anyone that was at the meeting that wasn't officially appointed by the board? Do we need to clarify them? Because I know you had other people up, or did they already get approved at your formational meeting?
No, so anyone who was going to be a voting committee member will have to be approved by the board. There was no one there that was not approved by the board, um, outside of our V-DOT representation and our FAMPO representation, so.
Okay.
Who are committee members, but they are not voting members.
I have one question. I submitted a constituent who's also a V-DOT employee, but we voted on him, so he's a voting member?
Yes, sir. Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, V-DOT, V-DOT and FAMPO, I guess, are advisory members, but they're not voting members.
That is correct.
So that's the way we'll handle it. All righty, and you met, um, last week?
We met last Wednesday, yes, sir.
Okay.
So who are your, who do we have on there right now that have been appointed? Are you going to give us a final sheet?
Yeah, so right now, let me check this from memory. So we have Ms. Sharon Taylor.
Well, you don't have to try to remember it. If, if you can just give us a email or something with all the people's names on it tomorrow, I think that's fine. And then we'll all have it, and we'll see if we need anybody in January before your next meeting in January, if possible.
That is correct.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
One, one point of clarification related to that, the committee also did recommend that the bylaws be amended so that to remove language that says that the member couldn't be from a board member's district. Originally, there was some language in there that talked about the board not being able to appoint people from their district, and the committee felt like that that was a little restrictive and might not provide the, the broadest representation across the county. So they did recommend to, to take that out, so if a board member had someone in their district that they felt like would be a strong candidate, then they could certainly make that recommendation as, as well, so.
Well, Mr. Hughes, didn't we say two members from each district was our, I thought was our recommendation?
It, it was two, but the, that language also said that.
Yeah, so it was, so it was kind of, uh, working against each other, it was oxymoron kind of. So it said that we couldn't have someone appointed from the district, but then it said we wanted two from each district, so we need to change the bylaw. Yeah, if you want to bring the bylaws back to the board, I guess in January with that correction, we'll be happy to make that change.
It will be either January or February, yes, sir.
Perfect. We have a meeting in January, though.
Yes, sir. We meet, uh, the next four consecutive months, and then we decide at that point if we need to, uh, reduce the number of meetings. The reason for the meeting, uh, in consecutive months right now is because application deadlines are coming up, and we need to work on the prioritization, uh, process of projects and looking at funding sources and, um, trying to get budget recommendations to the board as well.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Uh, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? We got a supplemental appropriation from schools. I think we discussed that at our previous meeting. Um, motion to adopt a consent would be in order.
So moved.
Is there a second to Mr. Forehand's motion?
Second.
Motion by, made, made by Mr. Forehand, seconded by Mr. Sealy to approve the consent agenda, item A through E as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. And it is seven-ten. We have closed meeting, but we don't have everybody for the closed meeting. Uh, the board will take a break until seven-thirty for public comments. It's about fifteen, twenty minutes, and our public hearing number four has been postponed, so we'll do public comments at seven-thirty, and we will be right back. We'll be in recess now. The December twelfth meeting, twelve, twelve, twenty-three. At this point in time, we will open the floor up to public comments. Public comments is a time when any citizen may speak regarding any matter that's not a public hearing or wasn't recently a public hearing. So on that note, we will declare public comment to be open. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on any matter? Mister Bassoon?
Good evening, Chairman Thomas, uh, board, staff, citizens.
Hold on one second, Mister Bassoon. Is it possible to turn his mic up some?
Hello, hello, hello.
Okay, so I just wanted to, I wanted to come before the board tonight and say thank you for your service. Thank you to county staff for this year and all of the hard work that they've put into and more especially my staff. I just want to give them credit publicly for keeping the commissioner revenues office floating and rolling. And um, their excellent work in providing information so that we can provide it to you all, so that you all can make some good uniform decisions for the benefit of citizens of Carolina. And I just wanted to share with the board, I started a program in my office where um, citizens could do a survey. It's a citizens satisfaction survey and we have a couple boxes mounted in the wall and some basic questions um, that any, anyone, any citizen that comes in can uh, speak on their experience as far as was it knowledgeable, was it respectful, all, there's a couple different sentences and they can rate it. And I have about a hundred of those in and only two were um, unfavorable and that was at the DMV counter, so I think we those would have been unfavorable either way. But um, very proud of my staff and there's an online submitter form, we got our first one online as well. So um, I invite you all to come through anytime and I look so forward to working with you all and county staff. And I want to give a um, shout out to all the county staff, but Miss Tamika Morgan, she is not only helpful, she's a teacher and she's taught me a lot. And um, I can't, I just want to say I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you Mister Bassoon and you're officially in the Bowling Green District.
Bowling Green, one oh nine Morgan Court.
Oh. No addresses, just districts. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as part of public comment? Anyone else who'd like to speak as part of public comment? Last call, anyone else? Hearing non-public comments declared closed. We will move to our public hearings, which the first public hearing has been postponed. So the second public hearing is uh, Mister Hughes, rep- uh, chapter forty-nine festivals and special events, Mister Hughes.
Thanks sir. Good evening Mister Chair, members of the board, as you know, this is a public hearing to repeal or replace chapter forty-nine festivals and special events. The first reading of this ordinance was in October and since then, we've had an opportunity to address the few items that were raised by the board, review the ordinance with county staff and uh, Marlene with the metal event park. Since the packet was released um, the other day, Marlene and I have spoken again and agreed upon some language in the orders to kind of clarify how events at metal event park uh, will be addressed by this ordinance. So I'll take a few moments to walk through the changes uh, since the first reading and since the packet was released. I would note that these changes are not material or to the impl- implu- implementation or application of the ordinance. Um, so I'll begin with those initial changes. So first, as you see on the screen. Not relatable? There's a later version of this. That's it, it's actually, I believe that's not the latest. Okay. Well, it's not this, I can walk, walk you through. So essentially on the first page, the changes to clarify how metal event park are treated. So essentially in the red paragraph there where it says twenty-five hundred, it would say twenty-five hundred people, twenty hu- twenty-five hundred people with alcohol sales or an alcohol-centered event would also be in there, so that language is there. So that was a change to kind of clarify what the triggers are for metal event park. And then at the park, at the uh, Carolina County Agricultural Fair, it would be twenty-five hundred people uh, would be the triggering event for the need for a permit. So on page two, the definition of outdoor and indoor gathering events um, is also amended to add the language that clarifies uh, the metal event park triggers twenty-five hundred people, twenty hu- twenty-five hundred people um, in the sale of alcohol or an alcohol-centered event. And the alcohol-centered event would be um, an event that advertised, let's say, a wine tasting festival or there was a, let's say bourbon and beer type festival, those would be like alcohol-centered events. So those would also trigger uh, the need for a permit. Also on page two, the language um, for, this is not the, this is the final, the language that related to admission of minors. There was a paragraph in here that talked about the admission of minors and that uh, minors could not be admitted without a parent. That language was deleted from the ordinance because it's essentially impossible for um, staff, county staff to enforce that type of ordinance. And so, just felt like it should be omitted from the documents since there was no way at all for staff to uh, enforce such an ordinance, whether or not minors were admitted and if their parents stayed with them. On page three, in item E. So item E was added where it shows uh, not more than four permits who are open to the public event shall be approved on a parcel without approval of a special exception permit without a special events facility. So essentially what this language does is it prevents someone with a large parcel, a lot of acreage, from repeatedly applying for a special events permit and essentially changing the use on their property. If I had a hundred acres and I, you know, month after month came back and asked for uh, a s- festival or something, I would essentially be changing the use of my property. And so here we limit those permits to four per parcel without coming back and apply for a special events, special exception. This also would uh, eliminate the need uh, for people who have special events um, applications or SUPs already from having to come back as well.
Mister Hughes?
Yes.
I, I think on E, I keep reading it and I was wondering why it was reading funny, I think you just need to put for open to the public, that permits shall be approved, permits shall approved on a parcel doesn't sound right to me. What am I missing there grammar wise?
No, I, I think this hall is that the red line version is not displayed, so. So we'll, we'll continue. I'll just walk. So on page four, in item D. Language regarding providing notice was amended as well. So before there was some unclear language about who should provide notice and what type of notice should be provided um, for multi-day events. So now the language says that um, the contact information including but not limited to names, mailing addresses, telephone numbers. Oh, that's not right. Um. Hang on. Oh, it shouldn't be. The copy of the application and support materials required by this chapter. And so that language was added so that if there was a multi-day event coming, then it would be clear as to who had to be noticed and who had to send a notice out. So it's up to the applicant to send that information out to the abutting property owner so that they notify um, the applicants, and then it continues on. It says, and it shall include a brief description of how citizens can submit comments to the board for consideration. Any interested person can submit comments in writing and or the public comment period for the application.
Are we missing the end of D? I see and in period.
Yes, there's, there is language that is missing there. Because it continues and as I said, it continues and says, and shall include a brief description of how citizens can submit comments to the board for consideration, period. Any interested person can submit comments in writing and or the public comment period for the application. So that language is there as well. So then the next change is-
What page is that, page four?
It's in, yeah, it's on four in your packet page.
Four. G. Four forty-nine.
It's under section forty-nine eight, D.
Mine doesn't have shall in it. In writing and or the public comment period for the applicant, so there's no shall in this.
That is correct, so you, that, that's what I was explaining, this was the clarification that was done. And what's not showing on the screen is the, the red line version.
Should it say shall?
Yes, it should say and shall.
Mine does not. But it says any interested person can submit. Okay.
What is it saying after the red line?
No, I, I, I see that, I just, I'm just wondering. Any interested party submitting comments, writing and or the public. Submit comments and writing and or the public comment period for the. Okay. Okay.
You have a shall part right there.
I have a shall part, it's, I just was looking at, I was looking at the end of this, not through the whole.
So the next change was on page five and it related to persons or entities applying for multiple event permits. And that language initially talked about them having to submit the info- information prior to permit approval. And the board agreed to strike that language so that the app- those, that information could be submitted when the permit was submitted, and so there was no advance requirement, like a year in advance. Originally the language was designed that in January, beginning of the year, you would have had to submit for your events. And so that language was stricken so that requirement went away. So then the next changes were on page seven. And here in the, in the original. Let me see, we didn't write it spot, yeah. The words temporary were stricken out of items two and three. So originally it read location.
Under P.
Yeah, so where the red line is to the left, on the left side of the screen up there, that indicates there's a change. So that's where we're looking at right now, so I, in items two and three, the word temporary was removed. So it originally read the location, capacity and nature of all temporary lighting, sound and public address facilities. And so the words temporary have been stricken out of both item two and three. So now it just reads the location, capacity, nature of all lighting, sound and public address facilities. And then the next changes are on page nine. We're in item E, so I can adjust this so you can see it. So you see it E at the bottom of your screen there. The language in red was added uh, where it says permits, studies and plans, they were included. This, these were added because this provision allows if there's an emergency situation and for some reason uh, an application is submitted and and they can't meet the timelines under the emergency provision, then they could submit at a later date. And also it allows the board could provide a conditional approval of an application if there was some information that was not included. So then the board could do a conditional approval, the applicant could then submit that information at a later date and then the county administrator could indeed grant the approval of the permit.
Question. How does that then go back to your thirty days notice to the surrounding neighbors?
So it, it does, so the, the notice is a separate item. So the, in this instance, it says where festivals also require federal, state or other local permits, studies or plans. And if you look at the requirements for submission, studies and plans are part of those submission requirements. And so if there was a study that was not complete, then the applicant would have an opportunity to submit those later. It says may be issued by the board of supervisors to provide preliminary proof to, of local approval. So in some instances, you may need to get a federal or state permit, but you have to have approval from the local governing body that you can do this activity and then indeed be issued a permit by that permitting agency. So this would allow the board to grant that approval on a conditional basis and then allow that applicant to provide those additional permits back to the county administrator for approval.
Okay.
So then the next change is at the bottom of this page where it talks about revocation of the permit. Um, the red language there was added, it says upon revocation of the permit, the applicant shall immediately terminate the gathering and provide orderly dispersal of those in attendance. That language was not included in the prior par- paragraph, so we just added it there to make it clear. The prior paragraph talks about a single event, this paragraph talks about a multiple event and so we just added that language to make it clear that if, if the board revokes a permit for a multiple event, then they also have to cease immediately. And then the final change was the addition of forty-nine uh, nineteen there, we just need to renumber that, it should be forty-nine twenty. But that is an emergency provision and that was added um, at the consultation with the state fair for metal event park uh, because sometimes they have circumstances where an applicant may ask for a permit and cannot meet the submission requirements of the, of the ordinance. And those requirements are that for a single day event, you know, that event permit should be filed forty-five days prior to the proposed event and for a multi-day event, that application is to be filed ninety days prior to. And for a multi-day event, that application is to be filed ninety days prior to that event. So there have been at least one situation there at Meadow Event Park last year where, um, there was an emergency situation. A, an event promoter needed somewhere on short notice. And in that scenario, they would not have been able to meet the standards of our ordinance. And so we added this provision there so that if that does occur, then we have an option to, um, service an applicant who was in the, ends up in a unusual circumstance. It's certainly not a get out of jail free card, but it's just an opportunity that if something, situation arises, we have a way to deal with it. So those were the changes that were included. Um, as a result of the board's comments from the first reading and then, like I said, in consultation with Chief Loftus and with Meadow Event Park. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and I apologize for the confusion with the presentation.
Uh, Ms. Hughes, I've got one question and, and I think we talked about this before. Uh, forty-nine nineteen, how do we really define an emergency? Shouldn't it, shouldn't it be a case where the festival is already approved? And then it has to move?
No, given an example, let's say someone was scheduled to have an event, say, at the Richmond Raceway Complex. And they had an issue where they couldn't hold an event at the complex and needed somewhere on short order. And they chose to come to Meadow Event Park. And they were inside the windows of our application, period. This would allow approval of that permit in that type of circumstance.
Yeah, your example was outside the county, so they would have, would not have had a permit to start with.
That is correct. Then they would be coming to the county and they would have to get a permit.
But if they were already in the county, say they wanted to do something at the county fairgrounds. And they went through the process and got a permit. Then the county fairgrounds said, "Oh, we're gonna close that week." Now there's an emergency. That defines an emergency. Right? So I'm just thinking, some sort of way to define an emergency, because if I come up to you fifteen days to go and say, "Oh, I can't do this at the Raceway Park. I need to use Meadow Farm." What happens?
Then we would accept their application. It would get reviewed by the technical team. The technical team would make the recommendation and then it would, could be approved by the county administrator.
I basically avoid the board of supervisors' approval if I do that.
In those emergency situations, yes, because there may be a situation, I, an example, say, if you didn't have a meeting in July. This past July, you canceled the meetings and so there wouldn't be an opportunity to meet the timelines that are laid out in the application process so that they could get to the board.
Okay. I'm, I'm just thinking of whether there should be a board meeting or a county administrator. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hughes? Mr. Underwood?
Um, Mr. Hughes, I looked at the, uh, went through this kind of carefully because Meadow Event is in my district. Um, my question is regarding the security plan. I, I thought about this back and forth. The Meadow Event Park always has a security plan in place for, but a smaller venue may not have a security plan that... I think we should have a recommendation in terms of a minimal amount of security for person, for an event. And I think we should have some kind of guideline there to make sure that we're in agreement as to what is needed at a, at a festival or an activity that's gonna occur. We say they do have to have a plan that's approved by the sheriff, but I'd like to see... A, I'd like to see a little more meat to, in lieu of what's going on in the world today. A little more meat in terms of recommendation, in terms of what we want as part of that security plan.
Sure.
Not leave it so open-ended.
Well, i- it actually isn't open-ended because the sheriff would review that application. And if they had some concerns and wanted to impose additional security concerns, the ordinance is structured so that the commenting agencies can impose additional conditions. So let's say if the sheriff said, "Okay, this is X Y Z event and I've had experience and they need to have twelve deputies versus five deputies as a part of that permit application," then the sheriff can make that recommendation that they have twelve deputies or any other security situation that they address as well.
But, but I know for, for events that, at the park, for example, that they have a minimum number of people that we say have to be on staff at an event. As I recall, if I'm not mistaken, um, and maybe I might be mistaken, but I just wanna make sure there's enough people at other events. And, and we've looked, you know, examined it thoroughly and we give the sheriff a little bit of guidance and hope. I'm sure he'll do a wonderful job, but I just- Yes, sir.
I agree with you completely. I think it should be a safety committee, more so than just the sheriff. You know, because you wanna include the fire and rescue, uh, maybe VDOT or something. All that stuff could apply, just like the state fairgrounds. They have a safety committee that actually meets about different events that take place. So I think this is very limited in nature and a committee would be much more appropriate.
Well, I, I just need to clarify. The, the technical review committee is actually those individuals. It spells out who the review committee is. It is actually the fire chief, VDOT, the health department, the building official, zoning, and the sheriff's department. So it is actually a committee. It's not solely incumbent upon the sheriff to make decisions about security or traffic or safety in terms of food, service, or facilities.
I think in forty-nine-two, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, my memory serves me, I'm getting old. Um, my memory served me correctly. You, you said it was the sheriff and that's what-
Well, when, when you spoke to security, I mean, I would view the sheriff's department as our security experts. And so that's why I specifically noted the sheriff as it relates to security. In terms of the other issues, like I said, VDOT is a part of the technical review. The health department is a part of the technical review. The fire department is a part of the technical review, as is the building official and zoning. And so all of those technical experts are a part of a review of an application. So it doesn't fall to a single agency to make, you know, sweeping decisions. The subject matter experts chime in on their areas of expertise.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I see that one. I, yeah, I have that one. I just... Thank you, Mr. Hughes. I'll, thank you, Sherman. I'll go back and come back later.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Seeley had a question.
Sheriff, how does this affect the county fair and events there? And I, I guess that's the one group that's sort of missing tonight. I'm glad to see the state fair here. Correct. Do they already do this for events? Do you see things for their events?
Yes. Uh, I work with the county fairgrounds and we supply security for the county fairgrounds and stuff.
For all their events, correct?
Well, the county fair is what I supply security for. But not all their events unless they ask up front and say, "Hey, can we get some security here?" And then I'll go over there.
So that means they're probably not over three hundred people?
Probably. Could be.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's kind of, is, that, that always been sort of the threshold, I guess?
Well, it's the county fair and then they, a lot of times they'll have like, uh, crabs, crab feast. And then I'll go over there for that as well. We definitely have security for the local county fair all the time.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything major.
But, Mr. Hughes, you're talking about crowds of over three hundred at the county fairgrounds or is it bigger than that?
No. So if you, if you know at the county fairground, they would have to have a permit if it's twenty-five hundred people.
Okay. Okay. Good. I'm good.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Hughes, under I, page six, for security plan. It says, "The applicant shall provide an adequate plan for security in and around the festival, including the number of deputies if required." That, there I'm saying, I, I want something that says, I want them to be required at all events.
So-
A minimum of personnel. That's where-
But, Mr. Underwood, it continues, "The plan shall be reviewed and approved by the sheriff for his destiny. The applicant should bear the cost thereof." So if the sheriff's department, for any permit that we get, if the sheriff says you need to have a deputy there, then they have to have a deputy there. If it is, you know, the, the policy, you, you have indicated that's what you want, then the sheriff would, has the authority and the ability here to have the sheriff there.
But, but what I see possibly is something occurring that we did not think about it. And had we had enforced law enforcement there, we could prevent an issue because it's required. He, he may not say, "Well, that's, it's a, it's a fishing, um, festival and we may, well, we're not gonna have the issue." And then there's an issue. I just think there should be a minimal amount of law enforcement personnel that we require for that, that cost to be picked up to ensure safety. I just think it's-
Well, I, I would have to let the sheriff respond to that in terms of if there are multiple events going on in the county in terms of his resources and available officers, so.
Are we, are we looking to require a sheriff's deputy at every festival permit?
What's that?
Is that, is that the intent? Is to require a sheriff's deputy at the, at every event?
I would just say yes.
So we, we've, we've added a significant cost?
It may not be significant.
Well, are you looking at twenty, thirty bucks an hour? I mean, what if, what if it's a church event? Church gotta come out of pocket for a deputy. And they're gonna look at us and say like, "Why the hell do we have to have a deputy? It's a church event."
I can tell you that a man walked into an AME church with a Bible study and killed seven people.
Understood, but-
So anything, I'm just saying, anything is possible.
Anything is always possible. Might walk in this room right now.
That's right. That's why he's back there.
Well, he's not always here.
Yeah. I am. Uh, the, the, the reality of it is that we're, it's just not... The times of old is my concern. And people's attitudes have changed. And I'd just like to see some, a, a recommendation, that's all. Um, I like this, I would like to see a, a requirement. I just think it's... An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And where's the sheriff? I'd like to hear from the sheriff what your thought, maybe. Maybe I'm just, uh, being too cautious.
I agree that this is a different time that we're in and we have to take a whole different approach to policing. But then also, I also agree with Mr. Forehand that, you know, if it's a church event, it might not be a need. And there is associated cost with any type of event, uh, that we do a private entity agreement with the individual and they have to pay a certain amount of money. And then it goes paid to the county and then the officer gets their time and a half rate. So when they're off duty. So, you know, it's really an in, case by case basis, it's really hard to say. Anything with alcohol, I think is certainly a given. If you have alcohol at some type of event, it should be some type of security. I give that much, you know? Yes, sir.
I, I guess my question to you in following up from Mr. Forehand was saying is, if we're requiring it, what kind of burden does that put on you when we need, if we need a couple deputies? I mean, because even though the, the, whatever event we're having is gonna be paying your deputies, you still have to cover the rest of the county. So what kind of burden does that put on you when you have some sort of festival going on? Or if you've had multiple festivals going on, if the state fair has something going on and then the county fair has something going on? I mean, and they're paying you, which is fine, but I mean, in the end, you've gotta cover the citizens of this county as a top priority. So what kind of strain is that gonna put on if we require, if we require the deputies?
Well, first of all, I'd have to know the statistical data on that, how many events there are in a year. And secondly, it would put no strain on the actual people in the community because I do not use the people that I have working for those events. It's all off-duty officers. Their opportunity to make extra money when they're off that day. So it's, it's not gonna take away from the citizens. I won't allow that to happen. So if you're working day shift today and you're off tomorrow and there's an event tomorrow, you can sign up for it and make time and a half.
They're saying you have the manpower for that. You have the manpower to cover that.
Well, right now, we've been able to cover everything that's come our way. You know, we did the Ladysmith Project with the roads. Uh, you know, it is difficult at times, but we seem to pull it out. And, uh, but I think that is a concern and I'd have to know those numbers before I could tell you for sure whether or not we could cover it.
And having thirty days gives you a chance to, to schedule people and make sure you got some money available.
Yeah, if you had plenty of time and plenty of notice, you could do that, yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Long had a question.
Yes, the, uh, sheriff, don't go away. Question. In this ordinance, there's a review as, as, uh, we were saying in the, in the report that says it will be reviewed by you and by the fire rescue. And there were a couple of other people in there. Do you feel in your professional opinion that that, if you saw something, you would, you would say yes and, and we would have the coverage? Or of course, there are also private security agents that people could go out to. That's gonna be a, a little bit of a burden on you and the chief, looking at those things as they come through. But do you think that action of review will give the safety that we're looking for in this ordinance?
Yes, I do. But that review, I think, needs to be together. You know, we all need to feed off of one another about suggestions and things that I might not think of. Chief Loftus would. And it doesn't need to be, send me the packet, I'll look it over and I'll make a few suggestions. It should be a safety committee that comes together and reviews those packets together. And so that I know his concerns with fire and rescue. I know VDOT's concerns with traffic. And that way we can all come together on it. And I think it would, we'd be a lot more effective that way than just having individuals review it.
And that could be done on Zoom? You could do that with-
Do it in, yes, any way possible.
So you wouldn't have to travel back and forth.
That is correct.
Or on, uh, like we do with, uh, staff meetings. All right. Thank you.
All righty. I think we've asked enough questions. Mr. Hughes? Board members ready? We're gonna declare the public hearing for, uh, chapter forty-nine, festivals and special events to be open? Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, just a couple of comments. I appreciate the dialogue that I've had prior to this code. And this has really been in the works for about four years, different versions. Um, a couple of things that I think are important to point out, just that we all know. But in our standpoint, from a liability insurance perspective, for us to even get the liability insurance, we need to operate and to, uh, even get an umbrella liability insurance policy written today. You have to prove to your insurance company that you're following all of the things that we've talked about, whether it's safety, fire and rescue, your infrastructure, risk management, all of that. So-
Marlene, could you state your name and who you represent?
Sure. Marlene Jaloff with Meadow Event Park.
Thank you.
Um, so I think, keeping in mind, um, I don't recall in this code whether insurance was even referenced. It's just something that I think, um, is important when events are approved. In our standpoint, I want to address, um, just real briefly, the emergency discussion. Um, and I think it's a lot clearer as of this evening after we had a chance to clarify that the twenty-five- twenty-five hundred attendance was was the base trigger for um the events at our property. That in combination with the alcohol clarified some things because my question was most of our emergency or quick booked events are things that are of a smaller nature, typically in the Farm Bureau Center. We really, um, our calendar is full enough that you can't, we we couldn't entertain a large event on a short turnaround. So typically, I think that's clear now. I'm not as concerned about that. Um, but the other pieces, and we've addressed it, um, I think that our, if you need a guideline for any other entities, if you look at our Meadow Event Park promoter guide, that's on the meadoweventpark.com website, that is a continual work in progress outlining um all of the rules for operating at the property and county regulations, tax regulations, it's all there. And so um, it's already been talked about, but we do continue to operate with a safety committee, which is all of the, it's all of the entities we're talking about in this code who come together four times a year and we share what we're doing and talk about the events and address concerns. So from our standpoint, I feel like it's much clearer than when we started and um I'm happy to, you know, you can use that resource for folks if you need to share with someone an example of what to put together to help people understand what to do. So all of that's there. Um, as of tonight, you know, I think I feel comfortable with where we're at and um you know, we'll continue to work through whatever the parameters are.
Thank you. We may have a question for you later, but if you'd like have a seat. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Hearing none? Public hearing is declared closed. Board members have any other questions of uh Mister Hughes or?
Mister Hughes, is there an insurance requirement in this for? And I know depending on what you're doing, if it's at a farm, it may not be required.
No, the only requirement for a bond or any type of insurance is if the uh event is being held on property belonging to the board. A surety amount determined by the county administrator, but not less than five thousand dollars and any form approved by the county attorney should be deposited with the county treasurer. So um, no, there is not a requirement for uh in in insurance.
Any other questions? You have a question for uh Ms. Jolof?
I I just wanted to make sure we we heard from her from her perspective of this, and I I think she did that very well. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Board members? All right. How's the board wish to dispose of this matter with the changes incorporated?
Well, I don't I don't support having a requirement for a deputy at an event.
He said he didn't support having a requirement for a deputy at an event. But there's no requirement as is.
If if it hasn't been added, then then so be it.
Mister Black, are you?
No, I'll just I'll I'll just make a motion then to uh, I'll make a motion that we um accept the proposed amendment to um repeal and replace uh chapter forty-nine festivals of the code of Caroline County with chapter forty-nine festivals and special events.
Second.
All right, uh, discussion on the motion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number six. Further discussion of possible actions to oppose the Aqua rate increase. Was this a county staff member or was this Mister Black?
Um, I guess I can start off. I I brought this up last, uh, excuse me, at the last meeting. Uh, this is their largest this is their largest pay increase that I've ever seen, uh, going for thirty percent. As you can see in the chart right there, um, for five thousand gallons of water and sewer for someone in the Bridlewood subdivision, which is um, which is in Mister Forehand's district and then the uh heritage part of Lake Landor uh for five thousand gallons under their proposed rate increase. If if Aqua gets the twenty-nine point five percent, uh, a family will be paying two hundred and eight dollars a month, two hundred and eight twenty-nine per month for wa- for five thousand gallons of water and sewer. To me, that is absolutely absurd. And um, I feel like we we need to do something in conjunction with other localities to uh to fight this, because I I couldn't imagine right now, um, if we, as I said earlier, Mister Thomas, I think you agreed with me. If we went up, you know, to the average home in Carolina, if we went up six hundred dollars a year in taxes on the average house, that um we would stay in office very long. And that's what this is. This is, this is not, you know, obviously, when we go up on taxes, it's proportional based on the value of the home. But this is, this is for everyone. This is, doesn't matter really, kind of every single home is gonna be facing this. Um, and and anyone, and and the water bill is going up significantly as well. I mean, seventy-eight dollars a month for five thousand gallons of water is is absurd. And um, it is much um way out of whack of what um Caroline is. So it's it's definitely, it's definitely outpaced that. And I feel like we we have to do something to stop to to fight this, because they just keep on taking and taking and taking and they are not good for this county. It is just, they are not. So that's, I will, that's, I will start with that and then everyone else can add discussion. Mister Partner, if you want to add more, that's fine. The kind of the details of what's in the, you know, the options are, that would be fine, too.
I agree with your comments about the price. The rate of increase, it's ridiculous. However, that development chose to sell their system to to Aqua. And I don't know what they got for it or where the money went or how long ago that was. I have no problem with us doing a strong letter of opposition, sending it to all our representatives and to the state corporation. However, we've already gone up against them, I think, twice legally and put money and and sort of been out there on our our own with that and gotten nowhere. I don't know if I wanna flush that same amount of money down the drain again. Uh, perhaps going with everybody else as you suggested, if it's re- letter writing, showing up and talking to representatives, but does it take money out of our citizens' hands who did not sell a system to a private company? I think we could certainly do that, but unless the lawyer has a good found case for us to go up against, it's their system. I don't know if we can control their rates any more than we can control what McDonald's sells for a hamburger for. So I feel the pain. I just don't know what more we can do that we haven't done before.
There there's a couple of huge fallacies that were just stated. Number one, um, McDonald's has competition. When I I can choose not to go to McDonald's. If I don't want to eat a McDonald's hamburger, I can go to Subway and eat it. I have a choice. The second fallacy is the people in those subdivisions, I don't care if you're in HOA, and that kind of bothers me um with certain members, is that the members of the HOA, I don't care if you're in Lake Caroline, I don't care if you're in Ladysmith Village, I don't care if you're in Bridlewood, I don't care if you're in Lake Landor, they pay taxes to this county. And back in the nineties, whenever that was sold, back in the nineteen nineties, there were people who were living in Lake Landor that have lived there for twenty years. And yes, the HOA ended up selling it, but they that that wasn't chosen. The the that was a long before many of these people either moved in or the long, even some of the longstanding members. And so that we have a, the the only way to fight a monopoly, which what this is, is to go through the State Corporation Commission. That is the only choice. The the REC's of the world, the Dominion Powers of the world, the Aqua Virginians of the world, they are monopolies. They are granted monopolies and they have no competition. When you live there, you have no choice. You have absolutely no choice whatsoever. So the reality behind it is, these people are citizens and they are facing something they call us because of the fact that it is a government entity that they have to deal with. They weren't dealing with, I mean, it's the State Corporation Commission, it's a level of government. And we have a choice. We have to put up with uh, the these are people, by the way, it's it's uh Madison District, it's Western Caroline District. I think Mister Thomas, you have um Elsinore is in the Matipanai District. And I'm not sure, Mister Shebel, if there's other districts that are involved. But I I feel like um we need to go to bat for these people because they are getting absolutely robbed. And I can't imagine, I mean, maybe, I guess, if I've heard the argument before, if you come from Northern Virginia and, you know, your mortgage is three thousand dollars a month and you move down to Lake Landor or Bridlewood and your mortgage is two thousand dollars a month and you'll take the, you'll take the two hundred dollar increase in your water bill because you're in your net savings. But for those people who have been here for a while, they they are citizens of this county. Just e- even though they live in an HOA and they are being, they they are being, this is being forced on them and it just keeps on happening. And w- we are the people that represent them and we, I feel like, need to go to bat for them to say, look, this is, we are not going to take this.
Mister Black, uh, Mister Chairman.
Uh, Mister Black, please don't, I think you misunderstood me. What I was saying is, I think we certainly should do letters and we should we should go, we should talk to our representatives. What I'm saying is, I don't think this is a a case to take to court directly, because we've tried that before. I think we need to join with other localities that might be facing the same thing and have a show of force to the different departments and particularly our representatives, so that they realize that. But this is, this is a business and I don't know if um, certainly, our attorney could advise us differently. I don't think we have a right to just go in and take it. Um, there has to be a different way of doing this because we've tried it twice before and we haven't solved the problem. So I'm looking for a new way to do it. And so I'd like to hear more about joining with other groups that you've talked to. But I don't think we as Caroline County can take them on by ourselves. We certainly can do it through through letters and showing up at meetings and talking to representatives. Uh, but what we've done in the past hasn't worked because we're back here again. That's what I was trying to say.
I I would. And I'll be right back, Mister Black. Mister Chairman, um, this is um this is, this is pretty, I I agree that we should should support any citizen who's being harmed in any way. I think we have an obligation to I I agree with Mrs. Long. We have to find a solution. We were here two or three years ago. Few years before that, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars and we got basically nothing in return. I think we have to find a solution not only for those residents, but for the county. Because we're going to be back here again doing the same thing. So um, Mister Black, my my hope is that there can be some recommendations to this board regarding how we end this. What is our our end game should be to give the folks some relief? How we get there is the question and and I'm hoping that we can get there. I we we have to join forces with other entities. I agree. How we fight a monopoly? I don't know. How we fight it? The um FCC, I don't know. How we get them to hear the cry of the people who are being harmed other than writing letters and joining? I really don't know. We've, we have to have a plan and we can't they're gonna make a ruling in favor of Aqua. We already know that. The question is, how much pain are the residents going to s- to have to bear? And then what are we willing to do to try to begin to mitigate that? And Mister McKenzie, I don't know what we can do where where the end game is, but I would hope that we would be moving toward an end game rather than a bandage.
Yeah, I guess I'll just take that opportunity to jump in and expand upon the staff report just a bit to the extent it references the process. Um, yeah, and yeah, I think the the immediate question to be answered is whether we file the notice to participate with the SEC in this particular rate increase. So um, that is the case before the SEC as I think the board has correctly pointed. We've been through that a number of times in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, before that in twenty seventeen. Um, we took different approaches in each of those instances. Those were both rate increase cases. In twenty seventeen, um, we mounted a a fuller um opposition to the rate increase, which is, you know, essentially going in and saying, here are all the reasons why we don't think the justifications they're providing for the rate increase are valid and why we think the SEC should deny them. And that is, for better or worse, the legal avenue we have to challenge this. Um, it's it's within the SEC's discretion to make those those decisions on rate, proposed rate increases. Aqua can't do it on its own, nor can any other utility. They need to get SEC approval. The way they do it is this legal process. Um, but as the board also noted in twenty seventeen, um, we spent about a year litigating that and um had a a modest reduction in their request from the SEC. Um, in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I was directly involved. We took a different approach and simply were focusing our efforts on, we filed the notice of participation and if you'll recall, we said largely we want to ensure that the citizens of Caroline County have the opportunity to be heard on this. And so we want, we lobbied to have a local public hearing. Um, unfortunately, that was during the pandemic and the SEC took the approach of making everything virtual. So they said, we're not doing in-person public hearings anywhere. We're doing virtual. That was the extent of our involvement, really. Um, and we didn't do any further kind of litigation. Um, and as a result, it, you know, it wasn't a major expense. Um, the the important thing, I think, I want to point out, it's in the staff report, but um, the threshold requirement is simply to file the notice of participation by the end of January. That's a very short document. And as you have heard from me just now, we have two of them on file already. We basically need to change the dates and file them. Um, and so that would give you the opportunity, if you were to file that, then to then decide whether and to what extent you want to participate based on um largely, I think, the other localities that elect to participate as well in any other HOAs. Um, I have heard that Bottotac County has already filed their notice of participation. And I've heard from my colleague in uh Fluvana County that they are in all likelihood gonna participate and are interested in collaborating um as much as possible with Caroline. So that's all the information I have for you on the subject.
We can do the protest letter or um, yeah, fi- file a protest in January, which gives us a chance to make verbal arguments and we could also ask them to do a local public hearing?
Yes, so that this is actually an issue that came up in twenty twenty. Um, we do have to kind of pick a lane. Because we, because in twenty twenty, we started with just a letter saying we'd like you to have a public hearing. Uh, and then we decided, well, actually, we'd like to be able to kind of have a dialogue with them because if we don't follow the respondent, we're basically treated like any other, you know, affected individual. And so we can submit a written letter, we can show up at the public hearing and say our, we get three. And so, we can submit a written letter, we can show up at the public hearing and say, our, we get three minutes or anything else, kind of like a, kind of like here. Um, so in twenty twenty, we sent that letter and then we thought, we want to make sure that we make this happen. So, we filed the notice of participation. We said, yeah, kind of withdraw the letter. We're gonna participate to this limited purpose. Um, and so, this year again, you would have to make the same choice. You could send a letter and say, we object and you're limited to that letter. Or you could file the notice of participation and then you could, you know, i- i- in the briefing submitted to the hearing examiner, who did basically, the way these work is, there's a hearing examiner who serves as the judge. And then the SEC is the commission, reviews a report that he prepares and either approves or denies or modifies it. So, we could just submit whatever we want to the hearing examiner. If it's an objection, that's fine. If the, if it's a full-throated opposition of the rate increase, you can do that too.
So, so I have a, um, and I thank you for clarifying that because I was gonna bring that up. Um, I think at the very least, the county, um, the reality behind it is, we can say we can write letters, we can talk to our legislatures. But unless, the reality behind it is, the rules as of now to fight any rate increase, th- this is the rules, is the State Corporation Commission, which by the way, I don't even know they have, I, I think I was talking to Mr. Orick, they're down to, I don't know how many, uh, commissioners they have. I think they have appointments that, um, haven't been filled according to, uh, Delegate Orick when I was talking to him. But my suggestion would be is, we take the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one path, which was a much cheaper option for us at the time than, than full participation, which we did in twenty seventeen. Um, with the idea of, um, banding together with the localities once we hear back from them. Because I think Mr. Parton had just sent letters and their boards of supervisors and I, I know in, in, in speaking with Fluvana, uh, Fluvana has, um, they haven't even, I mean, their probably situation is, is, is as bad, if not worse than ours. They have, they're the biggest HOA. Um, and they, they feel like they need to do something for their constituents. Um, they're having, I believe they're having problems, um, with sewage leakages into their, into their lake. Um, and I, I just feel like if we went with what we did in twenty twenty-one and then talked to, um, at the very least, there's a starting point and then start talking about splitting costs with, um, with Bodata and, um, because in these cases, you do need experts. I mean, the reality behind it is, um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna really, really go in there to fight it and maybe we could, there could be a reduction if we reached out to, um, those areas. Um, we could come back in January and say, and say, here's, here's what Fluvana agrees to pay, here's what Caroline agrees to pay, here's what the total cost is. Is that a possibility, Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, I mean, you can, again, kind of, you know, uh, we would ha- I'd have to come back to you, you know, at intervals and, and get your direction on the level of participation. But, you know, filing as a respondent, that, that filing essentially says, we will be impacted by this rate increase and we want to participate in these proceedings. And then, the extent and level of your participation is up to you as the respondent. So, um, and I do not have any more details from the other localities. I just heard from my counterpart in Fluvana by email during the meeting, so.
Is there a way we can also, because I know the last time was during the pandemic, um, and the SEC was not fond of traveling. Um, is there a way, because back in twenty seventeen, we did have the hearing, I'm here in Caroline. And the other thing that we also did, um, which was, the hearing is not, I think, until April thirtieth, from what I saw. As it gets closer, um, we could send out postcards or, um, we could, we could send out in a month or two, we could send out, uh, letters on how to, uh, because you can go on the website right now and, uh, send out information how people could protest. A postcard to people, how they could officially go on there and write statements about why they're against it so people would understand. It's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy site to, to navigate, the State Corporation Commission. A lot of people just assume, make a phone call rather than, um, rather than try to navigate the site. So, if the board would be okay with that, I think that would be a, kind of a, a way to start and then we can see what other localities are willing to put in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would it be the, our staff who would call other localities that have Aqua to come to some type of a, a plan of if they are going to join together?
They've already sent out, uh, staff has already sent out letters, I believe, to every single county in the state that is, they did that, uh, years ago and then they just, they still have the list.
That, that's correct. Every, uh, locality that was listed as receiving the, the notice on the, uh, from the SEC on the, on the, the, the increase. So, I think we've, I want to say we've heard from four to six so far. So, I, I would think that anyone that responds to the letter and expresses some interest, we would obviously contact and, and have further discussions with and get, uh, better information as to, as they're willing us to call, share, participate.
Right, because that would be something different than what we've done before. It would be a bigger group joining together from throughout the, the region.
In twenty seventeen, actually, in twenty seventeen, Fluvana, we did have participation from Fluvana.
Maybe one other locale, I think there were, I think there were some HOAs that.
Yeah, a couple of HOAs put money in. So, um, you know, they did, they did at that time, put some money in. So, um, there was, it was in twenty seventeen, we did not bear the whole, I mean, we, we bore a, 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 a brunt of the cost, but we did not bear a hundred percent of the cost in twenty seventeen.
We're gonna proceed with the, the letter, as you said, saying we want to participate. And separately, we'll contact other counties to see if they want to do anything. And then we'll make a determination from there, how much to invest if we decide to do that.
I, I would say at very least, we could, we could energize. I don't, I don't know if there is a notification requirement to every, maybe you, maybe you know, to every rate holder from Aqua?
Yes, the, the, the notice that I got and that Mr. Cully got, um, was sent to every rate holder and was published. Um, it's a, it's in that thing. It's a big, long newspaper ad.
No, not a newspaper ad, but a, a, an individual.
An individual mail, yeah. It, they, it's set off in the notice is what that was mailed out. Um, but yeah, I believe it was published and sent to every rate, rate payer. I mean, I, I can confirm that, but I believe so, yeah.
At, at very least, we could energize and, and send out a supplemental and, and to get them, say, all right, this is how you, this is the, the address you go to, this is what you put in, share your feelings, yada, yada, yah. Um, I mean, that's
I think even more important is to send them what we're looking at because I don't think those people actually go through and look at what, they just say, oh, rate increase, you know. I showed this to members of, of, in Bowling Green that were griping about water rates that went up ten percent. And, right, but I think something along these lines, this is what your rate's gonna be.
If you do nothing, this is what your rate could be.
I, I mean, because it, I think they need to see, if they do nothing, this is what's gonna happen. Because I, last time we sent a postcard and I don't remember what it looked like, but this is what hit, hits home is when you look at this in the board packet and you look at what it is and what it's gonna be. But I think everybody, because if, if you get a bit long and we all get the stuff from Dominion Power, by the time you read the thirty pages, like, I don't even know what I've looked at. I, I would just like to see something concise sent to them and when this would go into effect. So, they understand that this is coming unless we all do something. And I mean, they're part of the all.
And in, in my opinion, based upon me as a consumer and me as a board member, three thousand one-page notes from ratepayers holds a heck of a lot more weight than a thirty-page legal brief from an entity. So, again, that might, this might be our third tactic to, to, to attack this, but I think energizing the ratepayers would be more compelling than us spending seventy-five thousand dollars to write a legal brief, personally.
Well, that, that and we need to make sure that everybody understands all the options possible. And I think the, the biggest option is one that, that I've said I was gonna support the next time this came around and here we are at the next time. So, I'm supporting the biggest option. The questions, um, that sound good as far as direction?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just to be clear, I guess, if we could have a motion to, for me to file the notice of participation.
So moved. And then can we, can we add to that, that have county staff put together a postcard that would be sent out to the ratepayers?
We can do that.
Something like Mr. Celia suggested where the, uh, the water rates on front and then on the back, how people will go to, uh, complain to the State Corporation Commission. I can put it out, I mean, we can put it out on our Facebook pages and stuff too, but the reality behind is, if it comes in the mail, um, it, it, at least everyone's seeing it, so.
It would be part of a larger campaign. Their mailer is just one piece of.
Well, there is a, there is a way to, to do a mailer for like twenty cents per postcard.
Right, right.
So, we should do something like that and, and cut the cost down.
Yes.
But that's, if that's part of your motion?
Yes.
That's fine. Is that part of your second?
Part of my second.
All right. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will move to, uh, award for bid for construction of new fire, uh, Sparta Fire Station. Mr. Shebel and Mr. Cully?
I made it.
Thank you.
Had it marked, couldn't find it. Um, we received, um, four bids on, uh, Sparta and they, they were actually really close. So, we, we feel like we really had, uh, really, uh, a good number, but it was more than we had anticipated. It bid, lowest bid was five million, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, as you see in your packet. You do, um, remember that, and we put in the, um, uh, memo that we have spent already to date, two hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars on, uh, acquisition of the property, uh, installing the well, all the engineering and getting all the permits. We actually have our stormwater permit, which is, uh, not easy to do. Um, the remaining cost for the project, we estimate with everything and seven percent contingency would bring the total of the project to five million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Um, we'd originally estimated, uh, about eight hundred thousand dollars less for the bid, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars less and, and you all set that money aside, um, from the fund balance, uh, to make that so we didn't have to borrow at that time to go out for bids. Now, if you turn to the second page of, uh, the back page of your staff report, somehow I got all bent all up. We recommend, uh, based on, uh, where we ended FY twenty-three, um, that we take, uh, three million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars from the undesignated fund balance along with two million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one from the Public Safety Reserve, which we were already counting on, um, to make up that five million, seven hundred number. I would also, when I've talked to, uh, Dan Siegel, I would recommend, and he's, he's prepared and we can do it in January, you don't have to do it tonight, uh, bond reimbursement resolution. If we decide, um, that rates move around, come down, we may pay ourselves back out of that. Um, you don't have to do it, it's just, you can't do it if you don't pass that reimbursement resolution. You have up to sixty days from the award of the bid to do that. I don't have that for you tonight, but in January, we could certainly do that and you'll never have to borrow any money. Doesn't require you to borrow the money. It enables you the ability to borrow the money if down the road, you want to pay yourself back. For whatever reason, the fund balance goes down, you have an unexpected expense and you want to go in and borrow and the rates are good. So, we would bring that back to you in January. So, um, staff's recommending that you, um, move forward on the project at this time without borrowing any money and just paying for it from both, uh, the, the Fire Rescue Capital Reserve, which has been built up over the years by the chief and, uh, from the undesignated fund balance, you know, based on, uh, the audited numbers of where we're gonna be, uh, for FY twenty, the close of FY twenty-three. Anything you'd like to add?
All righty. What is the board, what should we do here?
Questions?
Go ahead, sit down.
Mr. Cully?
Yes, sir.
When we started this venture several, several years ago, weren't we in like a two-point-four million dollar range?
We were. We, um, you know, we had toured, uh, the chief and, uh, Deputy Chief and myself and, uh, maybe you had been to, you didn't. But, um, various fire stations and, and designs in New Kent and, um, they also, I didn't go, but I think they went out to, uh, the more expensive one in Goochland, but we had kind of come up with the square footage and had an idea, but when inflation hit, that's what took Carmel Church. So, we originally thought we could do Sparta for two million and I think Carmel Church for two and a half million. But those numbers just, um, the increase in inflation in the last year has taken our estimate and, and our engineers looked at it and go, the cost of materials and things have gone up, labor's gone up, that's, it's a good price. And like I said, we had three bids that were all within ninety-two thousand dollars of each other on five million dollars. So, I mean, it was, wasn't, that, that was, I bid was ninety-two.
No, it's the total. That was only top three.
Oh, the top three.
Three were for ninety-two.
Okay. But they were all relatively close on that much money. So, wouldn't really, wouldn't really anybody like a real low bid or anybody really.
We had made a, uh, there was a request, if I remember correctly, that we adopt this one design as our fire station moving forward.
Correct.
So, this is the same fire station we'd be putting in, that we put in Carmel Church?
Correct. It's, um, the chief can speak to this in more detail. Um, we've made some changes because of, as anything, as they were going through construction, they learned some things they wanted to do different. So, we did make some changes to the plan. Um, but when you have to, at, at some point in the future, it would be a man station. Um, and so, you have to have the, the bumps.
In fifty years, we can add on to it.
Then, but the cost of that's too much trouble.
In, in my, my, the, the, I guess the crux of it is, I'm, I'm, I'm having some sticker shock for a rural fire station.
It's gonna pretty much look just like Carmel Church. How many bays? Four bays.
They got two right now, but they got stacked in.
Stacked in.
They have a four-bay station.
It's a double door.
Double door.
Double door. So, they have, uh, engine, tanker, brush truck, utility. It's four. Just two doors on the outside, though.
All right, like I said, I'm just, just having, it's a big number for, for a rural fire station.
Absolutely. Part of the cost, though, uh, inflation is one thing, COVID was another. When we went out to look at these prices, New Kent is very similar to Carmel Church. That was about two-point-five million when we toured that. When we came to pricing, it was, it was sticker shock for us. Uh, the other issue, uh, Sparta's down to about eleven volunteer members today. Um, and like Upper Carolina, which we'll talk about in the budget, uh, they're down to two operational members. We're looking to put career staff there. Um, you're, you're gonna have to replace that station now or down the road. And originally, that station was slated for two thousand and seven, I believe was the last time that station came up. Uh, the board set aside a million dollars back then. The prices came in, it was three-point-four million, uh, when they designed that station. So, moving down the road, if, if you don't do this today because of cost, that's one thing. Uh, tomorrow, that station is still gonna be needing to be replaced and it's gonna cost you a lot more money. Uh, for a rural station, I get you. Uh, the station design for that is basically an engine company with three and an ambulance company of two. It's a seven-bedroom house. Um, so, it gives you a couple of spaces for volunteers. Um, and that's, that's the setup, you know, down there, you have a tanker, you have a brush truck, you got an engine, you got an ambulance. Uh, so, you fill up those four bays very quickly.
That would be the only thing I would add. It's not gonna get any cheaper and if we, we don't do it now, then we'll probably lose our stormwater permit. They'll change the standards. We'll have to re-engineer to get the stormwater permit. So, it clearly won't save any money.
If we were to do this, if we were to do the site work and create the pad.
That's a Joey question, but I would lock.
Well, let me get, um, another question. Mr. Underwood's got a question. I, I guess more so, and I know that some of the funding for Sparta went to the library down in Dawn, I believe, a million dollars back in.
Before I got here, so it would have been before twelve, yes.
Okay, it's not the case. All right, well, anyway, my comment and is, I, I don't think it's smart to spend five million dollars in this rural fire station. What I believe is smart is to build a new fire station in Bowling Green. Same design. We have the land where we can put enough firefighters in Bowling Green. Continue to use that firehouse. Continue to build, Sparta is going to grow. Right now, the rate of response for the Sparta Fire Department is seventy-seven percent non-response. In two thousand and twenty-two, they responded to seventy-three calls. When you look at the number of calls in Bowling Green or all of the firehouses, I don't know. When you look at the number of calls in Bowling Green or all of the firehouses, I don't know if Chief Loftus sent this to. One years ago, but I I mean, a few weeks ago, but I had asked. Lady Smith in twenty-two, twenty-seven hundred forty-nine calls. Bowling Green, fourteen hundred thirty-six calls. The lowest number of responses. In the county was Sparta. Yes, we're going to need a firehouse and. But I think it would be wise, it would be smart to build a new fire station here in Bowling Green, we have the land. There is the need, because the firehouse here in Bowling Green is not adequate. Let's have a real conversation about what is needed, when it's needed. And. Make the best use of them, still put the Sparta Fire Department in a plan. Hopefully, we'll continue to to save money, but I don't think it's the best use of money right now.
And one thing I would just add to that, uh, for clarification, the the design we have for Carmel Church is a one ambulance. One engine design, that's what we're using for Sparta, in Bowling Green today, we would have to design a larger building. And we would probably have to design it for three ambulances and two engines. Um, that is what we foresee going down the road, that is a central facility that serves Sparta today. Um, from a call standpoint and EMS standpoint, but we would have to go back to the drawing board for a design. That that is without a doubt, I I'd need something in the neighborhood of fourteen to sixteen bedrooms, and I would need to go from four bays to six bays. So, well, that is certainly an option, it it does come with added time and added cost, it won't come in at five million. Because it's just gotta be bigger, and if we did something in Lady Smith ten years from now or whatever, it would be a similar design, the population density, the call volume density. Uh, would require that kind of utilization of trucks and personnel, so just wanted to put that out there. Yeah, the the other design for that station, Carmel Church Station, would be at Port Royal. And and Port Royal is in need of a station as well, right, they, we can't get trucks in there, we have to buy special trucks for their size, so. We would use that Carmel Church design, again, at Port Royal, a one engine, one ambulance, does that make sense?
Yes, do we have land at Port Royal? No.
No, we do not.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Alrighty. Any other discussion questions?
What's our, if we were to say yes tonight, what's our groundbreaking, what's our proposed schedule look like according to the bids?
So we would issue a notice to proceed with contractor and uh determine with him when the actual uh groundbreaking would take place. So he would have some time that he needs to get all his paperwork in place, insurance in place. Um, us to have a a pre-construction meeting to kind of lay everything out, work on a supplemental list and do those things, so. Uh, we're probably forty-five days out or so, um, maybe sixty.
And and y'all. Feel this is. The the cost is reasonable, based upon the market.
So when we look at the the differences in the two stations between Carmel Church and Sparta, um, the the cost or or. If you add twelve percent onto it, which is six percent for the last two years since we bid that project, we fall right in line with that. Um, the biggest issue, difference, not issue, biggest difference, there's about sixteen thousand yards of dirt that has to move compared to Carmel Church. So there's a.
More or less.
More, so we've got to move more dirt, so there is more cost um associated with that at this particular location. Um, just because of the 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 topo of the land and trying to lay everything out for stormwater management. But, you know, dollar for dollar, you know, it 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 appears from everything that we can see, talking with the the bidders and. Um, one of the bidders was the the one that's building the Carmel Church Fire Station now, he was not the low bidder, uh, and talking with him that um. That that was the biggest difference that he saw between the two, but just the cost of living, um, you know, the the cost of doing business went up.
And and maybe Chief Loftus even, this, we have. Will have separate adequate wells, will have an emergency generator, so it's not only. It's not only a power station, this is a, this is a potential shelter if need be, if. Our community water source, if there's ever an issue.
Yeah, we've drilled a well, it's twenty-five gallons a minute at that uh particular well, that's already in place, so we wanted to make sure that was there before we built the building and had no water, so. And it does have a generator.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Yep, the whole station.
And we don't have any broadband out there yet? We do have broadband there. They're the only one that has it. Wow. That's backwards, but.
They, um, Breeze Line ran a line through there a few years ago as a backhaul into the uh into Bowling Green. Right down Sparta, you know, came over from Essex and.
I'm trying to make myself feel better, but it's it's does another other other things other than just how some apparatus that gets used seventy times a year.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah. I think the board needs to understand at some point, you're going to have to staff that, and it comes down to. Um, really, even on any of the outlying stations, they're all pretty similar in call volume, what kind of response times do we want for that part of the community? Right now, Sparta has some of the longest response times because your majority of service is coming out of Bowling Green, so you're fifteen to twenty-five minutes out. So when you look at that and you build a station there, the next step is to 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 put manpower in it to lower the response times for those folks out there. And we'll we'll bring the same thing to you in the budget time for Upper Carolina, Upper Carolina is down to two volunteers, there's essentially no volunteer response. Staffing that out there comes to strategic placement of an ambulance close to Bowling Green, close to Lady Smith. And it comes to lowering those response times for that part of the community, so it really comes down to how much can you afford and what service do we want to provide?
Before you sit down, have have you prioritized all of these yourself from a fire and rescue perspective?
From a fire rescue perspective, as far as the stations or the staffing piece or both.
Oh.
So number one right now for us is to staff Upper Carolina, they've got zero response, I need another ambulance in the system because of the ambulance utilization times are high. Even with Carmel Church coming on, so staffing of Upper Carolina is primary for me. You're going to have to invest heavily in the volunteer stations, whether it's through new station development. Or through throwing money at them for, like we did with Frog Level and fixed the ceiling in the bay. Bowling Green needs a new roof on the station, Port Royal needs a new roof. Uh, we've gone through some of the capital stuff in these stations, so there's gonna have to be some investment. Port Royal today is probably your biggest problem because you can't get apparatus in the building. Because because it's so small and it's so height limited, the second piece, Bowling Green uh is a center station for us. Uh, having manpower and and bathrooms and bedrooms to accommodate the staff that we're going to need, they need a new roof on the inside and the outside. So that's an important piece, they have a water problem in the parking lot, where water's sheeting down. And if you look at the front apron, that's why we've not invested any money in that front apron. Uh, so moving down the line, investing in that building may not be the best interest of the county and in building something. Uh, on a piece of land that we have or a piece of land that we acquire for that, but at the end of the day, Sparta still needs to be replaced. Port Royal still needs to be replaced, and whether you bite it off now or you bite it off in five more years, it's coming. Uh, we just, those are stations that got to be replaced immediately, can we get by with another five years in Bowling Green, maybe? Um, but I'm gonna have to have more staff, and as soon as I ask you for more staff, that building is is gonna be tough to accommodate. Uh, is there room in that building to make some design changes, yeah, but we're gonna have to invest a bunch of money in a roof, so.
I I'm I'm just wondering, is is thirty days enough for you to say? This is what I think we should do first, or do you think we should do Sparta first?
I think at this point, we've been, I've been working on, and Mister Colley, Sparta since twenty eighteen. Uh, and that's when we went through the whole deed thing and we determined that their property wasn't good enough, uh, I think that there's been. Hard cost, two hundred thousand dollars been put into it, yeah, you could, you're not literally losing that because you're handling the property, there's been a lot of soft costs put into that over the years. Um, it's gotta be done, we're so far down the line, you know, at this point, for me to say there's another station more deserving than for that. It's hard for me to stand in front of you and do, you you're already there at the door, if you can afford the extra million, or as Mister Colley said, you don't have to borrow the money. I say you go ahead and do it, um, but just know there's going to be other costs coming your way on on the station construction. Uh, you know, if we weren't this far down the line, I'd say we need to really look at at doing something in Bowling Green or in Port Royal. I need to acquire land in Port Royal now, so that you can build something in the future, um, so that'll be in the CIP, but that's where I would say. And I'm only standing here with that because we're so far down that path, I'm I'm not sure turning back is the best, but that's up to the board.
Yeah.
And you're not losing the property, you still own the property.
Yeah, and it's not really turning back, it's just saying, you know, we're gonna wait for a second and we're gonna do this other one, or this is the one we're gonna do, so. That's, that's the only thing I wanted to ask you, alright, any other questions? Comments, statements, what do we want to do?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward, because my first motion when we actually did this a few months ago is to go out to bid and build. The fire station, but we have, we have been working on this project for over twenty years, the station there is not habitable. The station there, none of the folks that are here from the Sparta Fire Station, they can all raise their hands. They can't stay there because it's been flooded so many times, it's beyond use, we've got to come up out of that bottom. The water today, Chief sent me, he's sitting here, sent me a picture of the water rising again fast. We've done all this work, we've gone out to bid, we said we're gonna build it, I'll make a motion that we accept. The the bid in the in the package and we move forward on the Sparta Fire Station. Do I need the amount in the in the motion?
I would appropriate those, you know, appropriate those amounts to.
And and the amount, I guess.
Five million seven hundred, it's the one with the contingency, I closed my packet, so I don't have it.
Five million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars to move forward with a station that we've lost years ago.
No further discussion, the motion is to uh move ahead on the Sparta Fire Station, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Mister Forehand, how do you bid?
Aye.
Mister Black?
Aye.
Mister Sealy?
Aye.
Mister Long? Mister Underwood?
I vote nay, but I just believe that we should build a new fire station in Bowling Green. A new fire station in Sparta is not gonna gonna cut down the res- I just think we get better results with a. New larger fire department in Bowling Green first and come back, I know like Mister Sealy said, and we talked about it for. I know thirteen or fourteen years about putting um a fire station that's needed. In Sparta, but in in good conscience and do doing what I believe is right. I'm gonna have to vote nay.
Uh, the motion passes, so that's it, we can move on to agenda item number eight. Targeted pay adjustments for sheriff's office, public safety plan.
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman, we implemented the public safety plan uh several years ago, it it wasn't long, it came to the attention of Chief Loftus. That by making caps in it to to make it affordable, you put everybody that was a firefighter, everybody that was a deputy. Was put on the scale where they belong, so if you had been a deputy here, you were put on step twenty, if you belonged at step twenty. But everybody else above that, whether it was an insurance officer or a fire and rescue, were capped at an eight thousand dollar increase. So if you were a lieutenant, you didn't go on necessarily the scale where you belonged, you went on the scale where that eight thousand landed you. At a step. Is that correct? Alright, I'm wrong, alright, come up here to me, I need help with that, but any anyway, with promotions, then we had uh had trouble. Because you moved down the scale and back, so you moved down the scale, which is higher up uh in the uh. Pay grades, and you moved back, I think, four steps, three steps. One step, but what that did is you. If you had somebody that had been working here right long, that was put on the scale in the right place and the lieutenants and things were not. When you tried to promote, then you promoted people above people that had been doing the same job. For years earlier, that's the best way I can explain it, Chief might be able to explain it a little bit better.
Um, for original placement of the individuals who had had a promotion, we placed them on a scale based on the time limit. That they had been in that position, so if you were promoted into a lieutenant position in say twenty nineteen. Um, when this was put into place in twenty twenty-two, we gave you three years of credit. As opposed to how much of credit you have had since you've been a uh county employee.
Yes, so you can see how that would artificially screw somebody up, so we had somebody that had been here ten years or promoted to lieutenant. Before the public safety pay plan, but they'd only been promoted lieutenant a couple of years, they got put on artificially low as lieutenant. Well, now you've got a guy that's been here ten years, he's trying to promote him, he goes down and back one, he's like six steps ahead of the other lieutenant. So Chief came to me and we found money in in the budget and vacancy savings to fix that and fix those. Existing lieutenants and put them where they needed to be, then the second time that uh rose its ugly head was with captains, when we had a captain retire. The same problem, we had, we tried to promote a lieutenant. The captain hadn't been put on the scale in the right place either, and and they were way above them, so we we fixed that in fire and rescue on on all employees except for one. But we really never, uh, and this is not a sheriff Moser issue, this was Sheriff Lipa never said he was having any problem promoting one way or the other, so we never really gave it any. Thought as to how that was going, Sheriff Moser. Ended up with the same problem when he took over, as well, if I gotta promote somebody and he was moving these people all around, it was causing the same. Shift in things where people weren't on the scale right if they got promoted, because they were placed on the scale, if you were sergeant in the sheriff's office. If you'd only been a sergeant for a year or two, you were way down in the sergeant's steps when you should have been much higher, so that's what we've come with you. Tonight to address, it's about seventy-one thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars to fix that for the sheriff's department. And it's uh seventeen this year to finish out, to fix it in fire and rescue. And obviously, that's a fire and rescue person that's been here and been in a leadership role since like nineteen ninety-nine and they're, you know, so I I wouldn't recommend fixing the sheriff's office and not. Fixing the one employee we have never fixed in fire and rescue, so the total cost is uh in in the budget there. To finish out this year, and obviously, we would budget in these, it's where the people would be moving forward in the budget for next year. So it it is, it's not a making of the sheriff's office, it's just a growing pains of implementing the public safety. Pay plan, and right now is obviously a fairness issue because we fixed one and haven't fixed the other.
So we're talking eighty-nine thousand dollars roughly right now?
Yes.
To July one, and then, of course, we'll be able to discuss this during the budget process as we go forward.
It would be put in the into the budget as we move forward.
Okay, and and make note of that, when we discuss the budget again, and say, remember, this is it, alright, board have any problem with moving ahead with this? Motion being ordered.
Just couple of questions. Uh, the seventy-one, six, seventy-five, how many people is that involved?
Oh, I gotta move out of the way.
Well, that's the sheriff.
So this, the seventeen thousand for the uh fire is one, the seventy-one thousand is about twelve to fifteen employees for the sheriff.
Remember, it's mainly people that were sergeants and lieutenants and captains in the sheriff's office.
Well, it looks like, well, books is going all the way down to master sergeant, to a master deputy.
I don't know what about the master, but I know it's sergeant above.
It is master deputy, lieutenant, sergeant, captain, and major.
I'll make a motion that we uh adopt the proposed target. Pay adjustment to certain positions in the approval of public sa- in the. In the public, uh, approve the public safety plan.
Second, roughly, roughly eighty-nine thousand.
Roughly eighty-nine, yeah, eighty, roughly eighty-nine thousand.
As presented, okay, motion made by Mister Sealy, seconded by Mister Underwood, discussion?
Discussion, discussion, discussion.
Question.
Discussion. I I'm I'm all in favor of doing this, but I have two, I have, I guess, one, two concerns. Number one, I gotta be honest, I I don't like doing pay stuff in the middle of the budget, I mean, before, in between, and 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 this, that, the the kind of. When we come to budget season, we should be able to say, hey, look, um, so I, I, there's nothing else in anywhere of the county employees, this is happening, correct?
No, because nobody else is on steps, it's only the public safety pay plan where people are promoted, given steps and promotions, we just. The rest of the organization doesn't operate that way.
These employees that have been, um, these employees that haven't been getting their proper steps for two years.
That's all figured, this is the cause.
So, in other words, it's, are we going back retro?
Yeah, fixes it, right?
Yeah, okay. Is this retro or not?
Moving forward. January one.
So it's moving forward.
And it's, and it's not as far back as you think because the captains were just fixed.
Yeah, last.
January with lieutenants and then the captains were just fixed. So it's, it hadn't been, it doesn't go all the way back to the beginning of the public safety pay plan. It just was when we were trying to do promotions that it was, that was brought up.
Do you have a question, Mr. Forehand?
Oh, my question was, are we done?
Okay.
I mean.
Mr. Black, you done?
That was, you know, his question. Are, are we, we got our arms around this completely so our fingers touch.
We do.
Okay.
If you, if you approve this as presented, it fixes everybody on the public safety pay plan.
All right. There's no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Um, I need about a five-minute break, maybe ten. Is that okay with everybody else? All right, we'll be right back in, uh, ten minutes. I got one. It's not working.
Try, but I have.
Mr. Sheeble.
Mr. Sheeble nearby. Um, you'll see the memo that um for installation and playground equipment at Low Massey Park. Remember this one earlier, we would authorize the purchase of playground equipment in amount of one hundred and seven thousand two fifty. That would be coming from thirty four thousand from the undead and as fund balance and thirty seventy three thousand one oh seven and seventy cents from the sale of the frog level rescue that we've been had in a reserve account. And then over there are the price estimates and these are the things we did at the main park, correct? And if you haven't been done, we have put up the new pavilion and poured the concrete floor and put a new gravel path from the existing path by the by. And that'll concrete that, concrete sidewalk to that.
We got some help from insurance when the other one.
We did, yeah, every we we um we had to pour the concrete over because we moved it over onto the property that we had obtained out of the woods. So, but the building insurance paid for for the most part.
All right, any questions on this purchase or?
I do. Mr. Sheeble, didn't we do something about our park, put a whole playground system in for under seventy?
Uh, this is the same exact playground equipment, um, so we were right at a hundred thousand, so when we were looking, um, this includes a few extra things such as your uh actually adding sidewalks to be able to get from the parking area to the pavilion and then to the pavilion to the ADA uh playground equipment, so it does have sidewalks included in there. So we were right around eighty thousand um for the playground equipment and the mulch and the installation, and then you had your extra things that went on top of that, same thing with this. So if you add up your playgrounds, fifty seven plus twenty two thousand. And then we're gonna relocate the swing, it's over in the woods, bring that over.
Yeah, no issue with that. The other, the only other one is new ADA tables. How many ADA tables are we buying? Because you don't have to have every table, it's an ADA table.
So they're old wooden picnic tables that are there that the structure fell on top of, so we're gonna pressure wash those, but really, we're gonna update those with the new um um I'm gonna say poly for lack of a better term, with the steel and then the poly that'll last for a long, long time, don't require any maintenance. Um, so that's what we're looking to do is just upgrade all those and replace those with new picnic tables and they'll um, some of them will be ADA.
Well, each end of a picnic table is ADA because you're gonna roll right up to it.
If the overhang's long enough, could be, yes, sir.
I just didn't, you know, just seemed like a big number for.
It's not all, that's all the tables.
Yeah, that's replacing all the tables.
Okay, but not all of them are gonna be.
No, probably four.
Special ADA.
Probably four, the four at the ends.
All right, that makes, that makes sense, okay. And these are twenty year lifetime type of.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion's in order.
What have you got, uh?
It's Underwood.
Nothing. I'm saying you're good. Oh, your mic's on, Mike, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we uh approve the additional thirty four thousand dollars added on to the money left over from the frog level sale for playground equipment at Low Massey Park.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mrs. Long. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries unanimously.
More to do.
Uh, purchase of vision computer assisted mass appraisal software.
Yes, sir, um, at at the request of sort of the uh commission revenue, but also at the request of our contractor that's working on our um um countywide uh reassessment, um, that our software company that we, the Stonewall was bought by Visions. But Visions runs a PC based software, as you remember, our Stonewall software is old Blue Ridge software was running on the AS four hundred. And with Keystone, we're moving away from the AS four hundred, so the only software we would have left running on it would be this old legacy Stonewall. But Visions has bought that and they're not gonna continue to support it, but for so long. Now, we had purchased from Keystone, although we have not installed it yet, it's not, we wasn't ready for probably another, at least another year before that was ready, a camera package. But that camera package is just a very similar to what we had with Stonewall, because of course Keystone is a financial software company, they do mainly that type of thing, they started in schools and then worked over to counties and so they're, they don't have a robust camera package. Visions is a company that that's what they do, they actually uh are moving into this state, but in other states, they do general mass reappraisal for government. And so they had developed software on their own for their own use so that it helps with what they do. So we've um seen demos of the software, it's very powerful, um, and like I said, the current uh vendor that we had doing our uh reassessment would like us to move to that because it is so powerful. So we 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 had by contract had signed a contract with Keystone that if we canceled it, you know, we did owe them uh the the deposit. And so we have negotiated half of that back, so um, and their fees to do um data conversion and the interface or whatever, th- those are all still uh in place, so they would have to do that anyway. And so I think the amount of money, so many different monies. County would avoid uh basically eighty three thousand that we've paid um in the Keystone system that could be then applied to um the the purchase of the vision software, the the interconnection will still be done by Keystone working with Vision, because they would have to do it to work with Vision who owns Stonewall to hook it up to our Stonewall system temporarily uh on the real estate. And what that is, is what it ties back to the real estate module that um they use to then generate the tax bills that goes over to the treasurer's side to go collect, so it's a, that's what that interface does.
So instead of paying eighty three thousand, we're gonna pay ninety four thousand, which is a net of eleven thousand?
Ninety five, right. It is a little more expensive, but it's a better, it, we believe it's a better, better software, and it wasn't available to us when we purchased the Keystone. They weren't marketing that software here.
Again, we're not gonna buy the eighty three thousand dollar Keystone version, we're gonna buy this camera version for ninety five, which.
From Visions.
From Vision, which only cost us eleven thousand more, plus it interfaces with what what we have.
Correct, and and several counties currently have visions in their, and Keystone and the interface, you know, they're they're using it.
All right, that sounds simple enough, ready to go, any other questions, motion?
Will will this system have photos of the home?
Yes.
It's nice.
It's very, it um, the older systems, you couldn't draw intricate, you know, they draw all these on the computer, what you have built out in the.
Correct.
And the integral were made more of squares and rectangles, when you started getting to rounds and the, they just didn't handle it well. And these newer softwares are just way more of a robust in how they work on the, because they're PC based versus coming off of the AS four hundred.
So that was a yes. Any other.
I make, I make a motion that we purchase the vision government solutions, computer assisted mass appraisal software for ninety five thousand dollars.
There's second.
Second.
Thank you, motions made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mrs. Long and Mr. Underwood, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, motion carries unanimously. Uh, additional consideration or or consideration of appropriation for social services.
Social services, this is a two pronged request, um, they received supplemental appropriation um to help um, lack of better word, unwind um the Medicaid expansion that was done, I guess during COVID. So um, they were given money for an employee to kind of work through that. Um, and that has to be used for that, that purpose, and they have somebody that's doing that, and that works temporarily through March thirty first, twenty twenty four. We didn't account for that, I don't think, knowing that in the budget, so that's just sort of built into their base budget, and then we do a transfer which went up for twenty four, um, so that that part of the money, and Tamika can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we still need that appropriated to that person. Because we we lumped it all together, that was broken out for this special thing that had to be done with a, and they're using a a part time person, plus they were paying overtime, so there were some people getting paid some overtime out of that money as well to do this basic cleanup of Medicaid. The other thing, they had requested a part time employee in admin in the budget, but it was not funded um at the, at the time, I think there was some confusion as to whether that was or wasn't uh funded, but it was not funded, and they would like to uh ask that that also uh be funded for this person in admin to be able to work, because of the workload that they had in um admin supporting all the services that they do, their, you know, their caseloads sort of continued to climb. Wendy, Mike can answer any detailed questions, I just have the high level view of that, we we did meet, staff did meet with Wendy to to discuss all this.
What's the final number?
Bottom number, I think, is twenty eight thousand six sixteen. Sixty cents, that finish out this year, one of those things goes away, so one of them goes away March thirty first, the other would be a permanent part time uh position.
That would be in the next budget.
Right.
It would, maybe start January, start now, I mean, it needs to start now, because the this lady is doing this Medicare, Medicaid, say the right word, unwinding, or what is the right word? Any questions, more, any more detail, uh, please, Wendy's here.
So you did, no, I was just gonna make a motion. Um, uh, the request for the packet says that um we're gonna move to uh for a part time administrative position and one temporary part time position in social services in that of twenty eight six sixteen sixty, am I reading that right?
Correct.
All right, that's it, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cully, you've got a consideration for additional funding for ten seven farms.
Correct, um, there, no, ten seven farms is applying for a grant, and so Tamika and I met with Ms. Carter and and discussed what they wanted to do to, and this would bring down, I think, a hundred and twenty five thousand. Is that about right? One fifty, it, with with the match and what we could bring down with the grant. And the, and the good part is, we figured out, uh, Tamika figured this out, that this qualifies for um the opioid money that we do receive that we can only use for certain things to do with um prevention and and recovery services and those kinds of things. And that they're creating a peer group to go out and there's, and that really is a strong thing, somebody that's a recovered addict to go out and help uh people suffering with that now. Uh, so we, it's not out of the fund balance, this would be out of the opioid fund balance, which we get that money, you know, we're gonna get it for the next sixteen years. So I, we would certainly recommend that, and that this would bring in so many other dollars that this is a good use of the, it would probably be a good use of local funds, but then we can use the opioid funds, it's like, to me, really a really good thing.
This is the same, this is the same company that did the uh.
Summer camp.
Summer camp at churches. Any other questions, Mr. Underwood?
Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we uh approve additional funding for um funding for the ten seven farms grant in the amount of, didn't need an amount.
Uh, seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand dollars.
From the.
From the opioid funds. There's second.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Sealy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, motion carries unanimously. Information calendar update, sir.
Very good, you can see Tamika updated the capital status of capital projects, um, so if you have any questions on that, you can please ask. December, so many things we've already through, um, uh, one important date.
Swearing in.
The twenty first, please be present at two thirty, the judge will be there to swear y'all in, having won your respective elections, and I think we've included Pam, where's Pam, I think, uh, school board and other constitutional officers. Soil and water conservation. So anyway, um, that'll be at the Circuit Court courtroom, two thirty on mon- on Thursday, the twenty first. Obviously, the next day, the governor has closed offices at noon, and you graciously agreed with that. Um, and and then Monday, uh, Christmas Day, we weren't planning on working other than those uh in public safety and utilities that always have to work, and so please remember them when they're not with their families that particular day, but there are people that do have to work on Christmas Day, New Year's Day. Um, New Year's Day, offices are closed, next board meeting, important date, the ninth, um, is our organizational meeting. Uh, the twenty third is our uh next meeting, Martin Luther King Day, officers will be closed on the fifteenth. And we have planned right now on the twenty fifth, uh, the Carmel Church Station uh fire ribbon cutting ceremony, and we're working, Pam Hall's working with uh Deputy Chief Garnett, as they work together to plan that event, we hope to have a really nice event there, we will be able to have that inside the bays, so we won't be out in frigid weather like a ribbon cutting type of, or you know, the groundbreaking uh event. Um, but we're looking for a nice event there about the twenty fifth, unfortunately, it's about as soon as we figure we could pull it off, based on when the contractor's gonna finish. And I think the chief's hoping we might, we might have anything with a tin on it.
Do we have a water meeting on the twenty second of January?
Yes, that's like a town hall, I, I didn't make it on here, yeah, I gotta add that on.
Can we add that?
Monday, the twenty second, we can.
Where, where are we at now with?
That would be here.
Right behind the River intake.
Yeah, so that'll be similar to like the other uh meeting that we had with the data centers, um, basically, we would bring our engineers in, um, county staff, we would talk about the project, let people know what that is. Um, and then we'd let people answer questions, um, and we'd respond to them.
Mrs. Sheeble, are we gonna discuss the issue that we have with the aquifer at this meeting?
So when you say the issue with the aqua, the groundwater management plan?
Correct, and the state pressures on us to stop drilling, yada, yada.
Yeah, that's part of why we're, why we're going to the rivers and and helping.
Because some of the circular reasoning, reasoning that we've seen, that our water is so bad, but we shouldn't pull out of the river.
Would DEQ be willing to come to talk about groundwater management, because.
Can ask them.
We're in the groundwater management issue and, you know, we're talking about it, town council's talking about it. We have two of our water systems in groundwater management, one at the high school in Milford. And everybody's affected, it's not just the west side of the county, it's, and it's not just the east side of the county, this is a collective issue down the road, so.
Get a nod from all the board members, then I'll, I'll ask them on behalf of the board, saying the board would like, they'd like to invite you to this town hall um and and do a ten minute presentation.
Are are our systems in Port Royal, Royal, part of this groundwater management?
They are, everything from nine ninety five going eastward now.
Everything.
Not just the Milford and the high school systems, this is those systems.
And every farmer that waters with a well that is in that aquifer, and there are plenty around, they are, they also have to do reporting, twenty thousand gallons a month or more has to report their use.
Okay. Sorry, it's compelling, and I.
All righty, that sounds good, that's it, Mr. Cully.
Thank you, yes, that would be it.
Okay, closing board comments, Mr. Forehand.
Uh, none, moment.
Mr. Black?
None.
Mrs. Sealy?
I have none.
Mr. Long?
I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season, go home and get some rest.
Yeah, we are, I'm sure they are.
Mr. Underwood?
He just gonna do this.
All right, and I have none, closed meeting, uh, Mr. Sealy.
Yes, sir, I have moved that this board convening closed meeting pursuant to the personal exemption of two point two dash three seven one one A one, the Code of Virginia, to discuss the employment of the county administrator and the salary of the of the county, Caroline County Sheriff, the consultation with legal counsel and con- contract exemption under section two dot two dash three seven one one dot A dot eight, A dot eight, and A dot twenty nine of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and discuss with staff regarding performance agreement relating to an economic development project in the Port Royal District, where discussion of an, of a foregoing in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy to county and the prospective business exemption of section two point two dash three seven one one dot A dot five of the Code of Virginia to discuss a prospective business and economic development project in the re church district, which has no previous public announcement has been made.
Is there a second? Just a, just second, then, Mr. Underwood, motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Underwood to go into closed meeting under those conditions. He stated, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay, the motion carries unanimously, we'll be in closed meeting and be right back.
I would just clarify that that's a motion to approve it. Um, as presented to you in closed uh and that you would like me to make the changes noted in the version we had enclosed and then circulate it for signature by the board chair or the county uh county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. That's exactly what I meant to say. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Forehand to approve the performance agreement for Amazon Web Services. Uh, with the changes discussed in closed meeting.
Yeah, it's uh Amazon Data Services.
And about?
Data services, Amazon data services.
Data services. Alright, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Nay. Motion made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Forehand to approve the performance agreement for Amazon Web Services. Uh, with the changes discussed in closed meeting.
Yeah, it's uh Amazon Data Services.
And about?
Data services, Amazon data services.
Data services. Alright, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Alright, Mr. Forehand, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Black.
Aye.
Mr. Sealy?
Nay.
Mrs. Long?
Mister Underwood?
And I vote aye as well, the motion carries four to two. We have approved the performance agreement with uh Amazon Web Services. We have uh nothing else, Mr. Sealy, you have a?
I'd like to amend for closing board comment if that would be.
Go right ahead.
I'd just like to say that I made a statement at the October seventh opening board comments which Mr. Cully was mentioned and it was not my intent to have him viewed in a negative situation in that comment. And wish to clarify that it was not anything that was incorrect that he had done, but was an example of something that had happened. So therefore, Mr. Cully did had no wrongdoing in that situation.
Thank you, sir. Um, the other two things we have are salary pay scale items. So I'm gonna ask the board if a board member will will make a motion to approve the salary and pay scale adjustments we discussed in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Black to uh staff and the county attorney apply the pay adjustments that were discussed in closed meeting, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Anything else that gathers our attention?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Is there a second? I'll I'll make the second, okay. Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Thomas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.